We're going to call this meeting of the Board of Education order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first order of business is approval of our meeting agenda. Is there a motion? Ms. Dayton, is there a second? Dr. Francis, any discussion? All those in favor of approving the meeting agenda? Passed at seven zero. Mr. Scher absent. Next order of business is the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Dr. Francis moves to accept the consent agenda. Is there a second? Ms. Dayton, any discussion? All right. All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda? Passed at seven zero. Thank you very much. Next up will be our school welcome. Mr. Healy.
Remember, it's my building. I know all the secret places.
Good evening, Chairman Bernstein, members of the Board of Education, Superintendent Mayo, members of Cabinet, colleagues, parents, students, and community members. First, let me welcome you to Central Middle School and thank you for the opportunity to highlight the myriad efforts in which we are engaged in support of student achievement, growth, and overall development. Over the past year and a half, Central's story has seemingly focused on the state or condition of our building and potential plans for athletic fields. As both school principal and a GPS parent, I've received numerous inquiries on these topics, and in each instance, I try to shift the focus of the conversation to the area over which I have the most control, teaching and learning. While I always advocate for my school and students in all facets of education, especially and including facilities, the real story of Central is how we are shifting our current instructional practice to meet the demands of the world today and ensure that all members of the CMS community are not only engaged but empowered learners. Now, in my third year as principal, the changes to our professional practice are obvious and the benefits to the learner experience palpable. Drawing on the work of education and thought leaders such as Eric Schenninger, Tom Murray, George Kuros, and Daniel Pink, the Central staff has spent many hours confronting our beliefs about school and the educational process. This process has been anchored in the vision of the graduate, with the learner capacity set forth in this document guiding our work and providing purpose to each learning opportunity. In using the language set forth in the vision of the graduate more consistently with our students, they are beginning to make meaningful connections to what we are learning and the significance beyond the classroom walls. Most notably, we see the vision of the graduate capacities clearly stated in learning outcomes that drive lessons and assigned as questions for purposeful student reflection after each lesson or unit. Through an emphasis on this type of learner experience and leveraging the instructional strategies of goal-setting and student conferencing, we are better able to make learning personal and guide each student to greater depth of knowledge and mastery of critical competencies. Over the course of this school year, the Central faculty has participated in ongoing professional learning in order to reframe our thinking and establish our collective beliefs about what school should be. This work began with an introduction to and an application of the design thinking model out of Stanford University's D-School. Thanks to a generous grant from the Greenwich Alliance for Education and the strategic support provided by Greenwich Leadership Partners, the entire faculty completed a full design cycle and participated in the process as the learner. The opportunity to empathize with our students by being the student, engage in problem-based learning activities, increase our exposure to a variety of digital tools and resources, and spend time reflecting on the experience has resulted in positive changes in the best interests of our children. Evidence of this shift with respect to teaching and learning is collected through a series of administrative walkthroughs, including a blended learning walkthrough with the simple team and through our regularly supervised observations. The data is then analyzed and shared with our faculty to celebrate our accomplishments and identify areas of continued focus. To date, the evidence gathered has shown a significant increase in student-centered learning activities, depth of knowledge expectations, emphasis on the vision of the graduate capacities, and alignment to the revised TEPEL indicators. Furthermore, there has been a move to share our learning with authentic audiences and partner with parents and community members to generate more meaningful learning experiences. Our second annual exhibition night is set this year for April 3, and we expect a large participation rate from our student body. The feedback from last year's event was extraordinary, and parents felt better connected to their children's experience at school as well as being impressed by what 11- to 14-year-olds know and are able to do. This year, we've also launched our reimagined capstone for all eighth graders that kicked off with a full-day speaker series, bringing in community experts, practitioners, and leaders to discuss their passion projects with our students. Our revised capstone experience has had a direct connection to the vision of the graduate and requires students to reflect on their personal strengths and areas for growth against each capacity. This more metacognitive approach to our capstone will benefit all students as they transition to high school and identify their future goals and plans for achievement while establishing our own North Star for the learner experience. While there is always more work to do, I'm extremely proud of our accomplishments to date and look forward to our continued journey. I hope this brief overview demonstrates how excited and inspired the Central community is in the work that we do to create a positive, nurturing, and collaborative environment where all members feel connected and valued. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Healy. So I came in for the capstone project. It was actually a lot of fun talking to the kids. They had some great questions, but they didn't really understand how many hours we spend at meetings, which is kind of interesting. They think they spend a lot of time in school. All right. With that, we're going to move into our public hearing. First up would be the GHS student government.
James appears to be stuck in traffic. It's really mean out there, so hopefully he'll get here in time. But I'm going to start it out. Chairman Bernstein, Mr. Mayo, members of the board, and all meeting attendees. As you may know, James and I are now second semester seniors, which means that I haven't done homework in two weeks. On the other hand, I have seen more movies in the last two weeks than ever. So there was Sahara, Jackie Chan First Strike, Mr. Nice Guy, you know, classics. And so the scene I want to talk about today in Sahara is this, there's this one scene where the heroes of the movie are on a motorboat on the Niger River, and they're about to crash into the bad guy's boat and, you know, explode in a giant fireball and stuff. So the main guy Dirk jumps off the boat into the safe, not exploding water, and swims to shore. And that's what's called a good idea. But the other two guys don't jump off the boat until the very last minute. They're okay, but like, why didn't you do it earlier? You know? And so if GHS student government were Dirk and the student body were the other two guys, then that scene I just described is a perfect metaphor for how our recent Winter Spirit Week went. It started off with Blizzard Day, for which only members of the Student Government Executive Committee dressed up. Then there was Jersey Day, a Valentine's Day-themed day, and a bunch of other cool stuff, but no one else was jumping off the boat. Between mass emails, Facebook posts, and banners in the student center, the message wasn't received until last minute when people came out en masse for the Friday night basketball game. I will say that the game was absolutely electrifying, and the Cardinals clutched a win by a mere three points. So that was awesome. And they're going to states, by the way. And so the question still remains, though, why didn't everyone just jump into the water earlier? Why is it so difficult to get Grange High School excited about something anymore? There must be a way. And so we know this because, we know that there must be a way because GHS students have come together for other causes this month to wonderful effect. Our second blood drive, despite facing another delayed school day start, was still a resounding success. We have our undaunted Vice President of Community Service, Rena Lambert, and the Red Cross staff to thank for that. Besides, before winter break, Carolina Bertullus, a GHS Student Government rep, created a banner for students to sign in the student center during lunch. Yesterday, the banner was delivered to Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School in Parkland, Florida, and represents GHS Cardinals' continued support for the Parkland community. These are all amazing examples of GHS students coming together for larger causes this month and is exactly what student government wants to build upon, especially at the upcoming Food Truck Fair. After disappointing cancellation due to rain last year, student government will be sure to schedule a rain date for this year's fair. It's going to be in May. It's going to be awesome. Great food, live music, fun activities, and best of all, the proceeds will go to a local charity. This is something everyone can get behind. This is something that even the guys in Sahara would have jumped into the river for. Thank you very much. So James was going to speak about, so right now is the student government is the Grange High School Class 2019 SRO. That's standing room only. It's a variety show. We've been practicing for weeks. And so that will be, I believe, the showings will be next week, so March 9th and around those days. But yeah, everybody should come out for that. And then besides that, as far as the, yes, we actually do look at the board docs and as far as the lunch, as far as the lunch, the lunch stuff goes, I guess, we are excited to see that the Board of Education is, you know, seeking to make big changes, and we'd like to, you know, voice our continued support. We really look forward to working with the Board of Eds. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alice. We're off to movies. All right. Next up is the GEA. Carol Sutton.
Principal Healy, Chairman Bernstein, board members, Superintendent Mayo, Cabinet, members of the community. My name is Carol Sutton, and I'm honored to represent 900 members of the Greenwich Education Association. On behalf of the teachers at New Lebanon School, I would like to extend broad and deep gratitude to the board, the administration, the building committee, Barbara Riccio, Clara Monaco, the custodians, the parents, everyone and anyone who had a hand in getting the new school open under budget and on time yesterday. The opening ceremony yesterday, for those of you who missed it, was inspiring. It was heartwarming, and yes, there were many tears, and these were tears of joy. After so many years in cramped quarters, the New Lebanon community will finally be able to spread its wings, literally, and soar. Disappointed pride for Greenwich, and I think every day should start with a dance party. That would be a lot of fun. So this evening, I will limit my comments to three items. First, when I attended your PD session a couple weeks ago, I want to participate. That's the kind of person I am. I just want to get involved. So I'm sort of compelled to add something to a topic that came up at that session on February 7. There was a lively discussion about student performance and student growth, and there was a lively part of it where they were talking about how teacher practice is the most important factor in student growth and in improving, and that improving teacher practice is imperative for the district. And then you talked about how we would do that. Was it a matter of money? Was it time that was needed to collaborate? And you were looking at it from a global perspective. And so I just want to add something that, from where I sit and from where the teachers are, to develop great teachers also requires developing great building-level administrators. A great principal inspires, motivates, opens doors, builds that professional culture, learns alongside the teachers, and most important of all, molds the new teachers into the educators that they all aspire to be. Everyone goes into education to be a great teacher. You know when you walk into a building that has that kind of leadership. You just know it. So by all means, what I wanted to add is, let's continue to work on robust professional development for our teachers, albeit the budget is a little bit slight next year, but let's also make sure that the conversation includes development for principals and other administrators as well. They deserve opportunities provided by the board, the opportunities they need to develop their potential as leaders too. Next, the work of the Policy Governance Committee. I know some of you might zone out on that, but this effort to update all board policies has been enlightening and also astonishing at how much time and effort it takes. This evening, you're looking at a series of policies related to community relations and community involvement. We all have, in the education world, unique challenges when it comes to the digital, the digital environment, the plethora of information available to all of us, and the expectations of all of our constituents. I've been GEA president for six years now, and I'm actually growing alarmed at the number of teachers, and I've also asked my gossip counterparts about their experience, but I'm alarmed at the number of teachers who are receiving multiple lengthy, what could only be described as boundary-crossing emails from parents every day. Sometimes these emails can ruin the day. It's very hard to teach after you've opened an email that questions your professionalism or your practice or accuses you of something that comes out of, comes out of the blue. So while there are standards of acceptable use for all staff and for all students, GEA believes there needs to be similar standards for parents as well when it comes to using digital communication. And we are pleased that Ralph and also Bob Stacy are open to our ideas and have entertained some of our ideas on this topic, and we hope that the board will support us and them in the establishment of community email norms as well. Finally, I'm looking forward to hearing more about the partnership between Greenwich High School and Wright Tech, which may open the door to other opportunities for our diverse student population. They have so many needs and so many interests. It's great that we try to satisfy them all, which is evidenced in that huge Greenwich High School Course of Study Guide. West Hill has its agriculture program, which is well-known. Norwalk High School has a relationship with IBM that results in students graduating not only with experience but with an associate's degree. On top of everything else we're doing, it'd be wonderful to explore ideas like this in Greenwich. And one more thing, I know food is on the agenda tonight. I just want to say that without Greenwich Food Service, there are many GHS teachers who would just absolutely go hungry. They take dinner home from Greenwich High School. The food has improved tremendously there, and I know that a lot of interested people want it to extend to other schools as well. Thank you so much. I'm looking forward to the meeting.
Thank you, Carol. Next up is PTA Council.
Good evening, Superintendent Mayo, Chairman Bernstein, Principal Healy, members of the board, Cabinet, and community. I'm Karen Hirsch, President of PTA Council, and with me is Cricket Diamond, First VP. It's an exciting week for Greenwich Public Schools with the opening of the new New Lebanon School. Teachers and students were thrilled with the successful move into their new home. It's been years in the making, but the dream is now reality, and we look forward to the community open house this weekend. Churchill once said, "Those who fail to learn from history are doomed to repeat it." I mention our history as it is apparent that our consistent advocacy for improved communications, feedback on prior strategic plans, and frequent discussions about what we feed our students' minds and bodies has made a positive impact on current practices. We're pleased that the board is continuing to look for ways to improve the food service program at Council, as Council's Health and Wellness Committee has passionately advocated for and seen many improvements in the past years. In 2017, the National PTA issued a statement addressing their disappointment with the relaxation of nutritional standards being used for school meals. GPS parent and student surveys certainly seem to support this sentiment as well. Of those who responded, the three main concerns were long lunch lines and a clear preference for better quality food and a desire for better variety of lunch options. As you consider ways to improve food services, parent and student concerns must be addressed, and any plan or pilot must take into account the needs of our most vulnerable students. National CTPTA has advised us that PTA should not take a position against the National School Lunch Program, which was created to ensure that all children have an opportunity to eat no matter what their financial constraints are. Over 20% of our student population currently qualifies for this program, the largest number in recent years. In fact, 35% of the lunches sold here last year were purchased by students who qualify for the program, and the district expects to receive close to $780,000 next year through federal and state food programs to assist with providing meals to children in the most need. And as such, we truly need to make sure that any plan or pilot addresses the needs of these students on the National School Lunch Program. We appreciate that the board takes concerns, desires, and needs of our unique school community into account in this ongoing conversation and ask that you not overlook the district breakfast program or the schools that provide them and to find ways to reduce food and packaging waste. As Council is dedicated to supporting children's educational successes, we're also pleased to see how the development of students as active participants in their own learning has aided and approved student outcomes, as noted in tonight's strategic plan review. Personalized learning is inherent in any discussion of the strategic plan, and we ask again for detailed review and a better understanding of the specific plan and goals for each wave rollout. Without specific targets set in advance with dates of completion, there can be no true measure of the success made or areas of weakness found. In fact, going forward, every section of the strategic plan should include stated goals tied to a timeline, which leads us to look at the program inventory and outcome project. Council requested each review include an in-depth look at digital learning and, more specifically, screen time to get an accurate account of how much time is spent daily on digital devices and how they're being used within each program. There is a need for a creation of a district policy on screen time and digital wellness as parents are concerned about the long-term effects that this may have on their children's health and education.
Moving on to one of our favorite topics, family and community engagement, which addresses the very foundation of PTA by supporting involvement of parents in the lives and education of their children. We thank the district for adding a key documents section to the website, but would like to see this as a tab on the front page as well as for each PTA. This would tie in well with stated FACE goals by offering a common location on every school website, making it easier for parents to locate important documents and materials such as yearly achievement reports, school and council presentations with links to corresponding board documents and minutes. As a stated goal for FACE is to develop and administer family and community engagement surveys, it is apropos that tonight's agenda includes a review of community relations and engagement policies that highlight the value Greenwich Public Schools places on parent and community organizations as invaluable resources that provide important support to district schools by strengthening community support for them. Council and our 15 PTAs are your partners in education and are best positioned to be an added bridge between the district and parents. This partnership is instrumental in helping create and support an achievable parent-community engagement plan. As such, we would like an opportunity to participate in an advisory role in the planning of parent engagement surveys. In closing, we must continually look forward but must also understand our history in order to not repeat the mistakes of the past. As you move forward with a review of the current strategic and the whole student development plans, Council wants to make sure that you include opportunities for community feedback and small group discussions with key stakeholders to gather input. We must take the time to think critically about past practice and learn from both prior successes and failures in order to see continued growth and trust that you will use this feedback to help shape future plans to benefit the greatest majority of students while also being conscious to support communities of special need. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Healy, do you want to come down? No? Okay. I want to make sure. All right. So next up is our community comments. Speakers are limited to three minutes. We're going to take agenda items first. I noticed that all of the speakers that have signed up for agenda items are about food. Just to set the table for this, I know a lot of emails have been flying around. Yeah, exactly. I had one. A lot of emails have been flying around that there's a vote tonight. This is actually a discussion item. It's the first time the board's taken this up. It's one idea. So there's no vote tonight. I don't want anybody leaving disappointed, but I just wanted to let you know that. So what we'll do is I'll call you down. I'll let you know who the next speaker is. We'll have you come down and speak. We timed you. You get three minutes. We get a 30-second warning, and we'll go from there. And we have, I think, 13 speakers signed up on this topic. I know other people have come in. If somebody's already said what you were going to say, you can just get up and say thank you very much or not come at all. Up to you. All right. So we're going to start with Robin Wiley, followed by Heather Pugne. And I'm going to mispronounce all your names, and I apologize in advance.
Good evening, board members, parents, fellow food service workers. I'm not a public speaker, so please bear with me. If I stumble on my words, we can all have a good laugh. However, I'm concerned with what is going on in the food service department. I'm saddened by the bashing on social media that our food is not up to par or that we serve junk food. We have made many changes to our food. We now serve five vegetables and fruit, which is unlimited to every child every day. All our meals average less than 10% of calories from saturated fat, and every item contains zero trans fat. We meet the USDA guidelines for limiting sodium. We serve yogurt parfaits with fresh fruit daily. Our juice is 100% fruit juice. We also serve fresh fruit from local farmers during seizing. It seems subverses against the town of Greenwich. There's a couple of squeaky wheels that are getting oiled. Has anyone checked into this agenda that's happening? Why would we jump ship to outsource without first working together to make changes, which we have done? Have the parents and the children revisited our lunch programs since we have made changes? We have a lot of children eating every day that seem very happy. The products in the pictures, some of them have been outdated that have been put up, which concerns us. They show milk that we no longer use, cookies we no longer use. We use a lot more fresh vegetables. I'm also disturbed at what it's been said on the media for free and reduced children are getting junk food, and no one cares. This is very untrue. Boar's Head co-cuts or beef franks, junk, I ask, are free and reduced children. Exactly the same thing as our paying children. No exceptions at all. I don't know what, why they wouldn't want to work together with us. We've made changes. We're continuing to make changes. But instead of outsourcing, first, why aren't we given the option? Why aren't you giving us the option to correct what it is? We're doing more fruits, vegetable. The meat is better. If you go on the website, you will see it. We have Did You Know?, which explains a lot. If anybody would like a copy, I'd be glad to give it to you. And instead of this outsourcing, I understand that, but I think that you need to give us the right juke, because our food is not junk, as far as I'm concerned.
Robin, you can use my 30 seconds. Go ahead.
She can. So, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you. No, sorry. So the next speaker is Heather Pugne. Okay. So Chris, I'm going to mispronounce your last name. You're going to help me out.
Zagudica.
Zagudica. Thank you. After that, it's Nerlin Pearson.
My name is Chris. I'm actually the North Street Cook One right now. It's my first year, and I mean, it's been a lot of fun. I've been working with the kids intensively, one-on-one, trying to teach them nutrition as best I can, right? I just think that at this moment, what was being done is something that's completely too far, right? A lot of what we're doing, from me to North Myanis to Julie Curtis to Cos Cob, is we're trying to make the kids understand better food and better quality. With what we're given, we're doing the best we can. I love my job. I wear my passion on my sleeve and nothing else. And from day one, I've had these lovely ladies appear, showing me what it means to be not only a cook one but someone that cares for the children. Doesn't matter if the kid's the first first grader in line or the last kindergarten line. They're considered my children, and I spend my time working with them. When it comes to all this stuff about outsourcing, I ask why? Why are we not allowed as cooks to give our two cents, to give our idea? I had no idea about this meeting and nothing about it because no one had told me. I've been cooking for years. I put out love in every dish, but I'm not allowed to work with dishes because of this and because of that. All I ask for and all we ask for is a chance to show that not only do we care about your kids, we care about our kids, and we care about every dish that comes out there. Whatever we do is not junk food. We don't go out there trying to give kids chocolate and candies and cookies and not give lunch. I go out there every day. I go in 8:30, and I make sure that every kid walks away with a fruit, a vegetable, and a smile, because those kids are our future, and those kids are the kids that are going to be the future cooks, the future chefs, the future mathematicians, and those kids are what we care about. Every day is just another issue with food quality or this or how Robin put the social medias or the Greenwich Times, but yet no one comes in now asking us, hey, how's it going? Not... Not allowing us to defend ourselves. The PTA in my school recently have been giving fresher ingredients that they're growing themselves. Dill, cilantro, asking us to incorporate that in our meals, and we do it gladly. Personally, I want to work with not only the PTA, but the parents, because they know their kids, and we can help them as much as they can help us. All we ask for is a chance to show everybody here, to show the Board of Ed, to show our bosses, that we do this for more than just a paycheck.
30 seconds, Chris.
And unfortunately, I feel like as we go down, that people just see this as a paycheck and not as a job. I love my job to cook. I love every kid, and no matter what happens, we're going to continue serving delicious food the best to our abilities. If you guys tell us something new, we'll do something new. If you guys give us freedom, we'll be more than happy to do free, different choices. All we ask for is a chance to prove ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is Nerlin Pearson, followed by Melissa DeVries.
Good evening. My name's Nerlin Pearson. I'm one of the co-chairs of the PTAC Health and Wellness Committee, and I am speaking here today on behalf of the committee. I have served as a member of the Health and Wellness Committee for the past five years. I recall that at my very first committee meeting, improving the quality and nutritional value of the lunch served at schools was on the agenda item. From then on, that agenda item has been discussed at every PTAC Health and Wellness meeting for the past five years. Over the years, members of the committee have worked countless hours to improve the quality of the lunch food program in our schools. In partnership with John Hopkins and the Food Services Department, we have been able to make some minor changes. For example, raising the quality and lowering the number of snack options. Frozen veggies are now limited to corn, edamame, and some oven crisp potato options. No more potato smiles. However, these minor changes do not address what parents and students have been requesting and wanting for years. Real substantive improvements to the quality, nutritional value, and taste of the student lunches in our schools. We recognize that the employees and staff work hard every day, and we're not here to question that. But every time we've tried to implement real substantive improvements to the actual meals being provided to students, we run into the same roadblocks and reality. The Food Services Department is a business that needs to take into account a number of factors, such as its budget, staffing, and its bottom line. We recognize that these factors place real constraints on what I think we can all agree is our common goal, for students to have wholesome nutritional food that they will want to eat. In 2017, the committee, in partnership with the Food Services Department and the district, conducted surveys of the high school, the middle schools, and the elementary school food services program. At the heart of the data results, the stakeholders, the parents and the students, clearly stated that they wanted healthier, more appealing food, and were willing to pay more for it. Nearly half the parents respondents in the middle schools and elementary schools never participate in the lunch program, and the number one reason for this is the quality of the food. The vast majority, over 70%, in both the middle and elementary schools are willing to pay more for higher quality lunch offering, and at the high school, it's over 60% who are willing to pay more. Recognizing the constraints noted above, the minimal change we've been able to effectuate over the past five years and the wishes of the parents and students, we applaud the board and the district's initiative to look at an alternative solution in an effort to improve the quality of the lunch programs in our school. An alternative solution such as the Food Services Pilot Program being discussed in today's meeting. We think this is an important first step in attaining that objective, and we ask that at all times you keep in mind the importance of ensuring that all students, regardless of their financial circumstances, have access to the same high quality of nutritional food.
Thank you very much, Nerlin. You can submit your comments via writing if you want. All right, so next up is Melissa DeVries, followed by Abby Larch.
My name is Melissa DeVries. I have two children in the school system and have been a PTAC Health and Wellness Committee member for several years. When I last spoke at the Board of Ed meeting in October, I addressed the results from the lunch surveys we conducted in 2017. While there's plenty of compelling data there to suggest we should overhaul the school lunch program, let's address what really matters here: our children's health. The research is out there. We know a diet high in processed food can lead to serious health issues, including obesity, diabetes, heart disease, and cancer. We also know that eating too many refined carbohydrates can contribute to systemic inflammation, and long-term inflammation caused by high levels of glucose and insulin can negatively affect the brain, leading to an associated increased risk of developing diseases like Alzheimer's and dementia. Let's look at a typical lunch I brought today. Fortunately, you can't all see it, but voila. My nine-year-old daughter says this is one of the better ones, quote/unquote. The chicken tenders are processed and contain approximately 30 grams of carbs. The roll has an added 20 to 30 grams of carbs. The chocolate milk is another 22 grams with 11 grams of added sugar. There's a potential 82 grams of unhealthy and refined carbs on this tray alone compared to approximately seven grams of healthy carbs between the carrots, cucumbers, and orange. And this is what some kids eat before they go back in for extras, such as ice cream and cookies that contain even more refined sugars, refined carbs or sugar. How can we educate and sell our children on the benefits of eating well, that it will improve how they feel, improve academic and athletic performance, and be better for their long-term health when this is what we offer them? There is a total disconnect here. What we are saying to our kids and what we are serving them in our cafeterias does not add up. There are about 9,000 good reasons in our district to support making a change. Our children, all of them, deserve better quality food in school. We're doing our children a huge disservice by continuing the current food services model. Nothing ventured, nothing gained. Parents and committee members have devoted countless volunteer hours on this issue. Let's stop talking about it and actually do something about it. Let's be leaders in the campaign that educates and serves our children the nutritious food they need to learn and grow. Let's make the right choice now. Vote to at least pilot an outside provider, such as No Fuss Lunch, because the health and future of our children depends on it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Abby Larch, followed by John Blenke.
My name is Abby Larch. A really good friend of mine helped me launch the district-approved allergy awareness program, forwarded me a clip of No Fuss Lunch on a daytime show, The Chew. She said, "Why can't we do this?" That was four years ago. Since then, I've taken my 25-year financial planning background and immersed myself in PTA and town committee work to understand people, process, numbers, and politics. After years of trying to increase participation and the quality of the food, we need to take a look at another business model that satisfies every constituent involved. Many called for a request for a proposal to outsource our food services program, which didn't happen mainly because we didn't have enough data to figure out what we really needed. In 2017, we got the data. You've heard it tonight, what the data tells us. The basic meals cost between $3.60 and $3.85. What happens, though, most of it goes in the garbage, and the kids buy the cookies, ice cream, and chips, which, by the way, include ingredients banned in most countries, and wind up paying around $7 to $7.50 anyway. In fact, at Glenville, for example, based on the P&amp;L, the average price per meal is $7, and this is based on daily sales, average participation, over the number of days served between 8:30 and 12:31. At the high school, it's a lot more than that. The kids on the National School Lunch Program are only entitled to a basic meal, which often is their only balanced meal of the day, and they're not really eating it. There is no nutrition in a lunch uneaten. They could pay for à la carte items, but most can't. Inequality in the lunchroom isn't cool. This year, the School Lunch Fund Committee started working on two RFPs, one institutional food service model template, and another using creative license to be innovative, to ask, "What can you do for us?" This latter RFP is designed for No Fuss Lunch, whose meals cost between $4 and $7. They have 20 different, healthy, all-inclusive, allergen, and kid-friendly meals, both for lunch and breakfast, daily, to choose from with their online ordering system, so every child is treated equally. I'm not saying No Fuss Lunch is the ultimate answer. I'm saying piloting two schools for the year gives the district more data and experience to see what this company can do, and at the same time, because food services has been understaffed for years, it gives an opportunity to gain staff in schools that need it most. So major improvements could be made and help address the fact that labor costs are more than food costs. If No Fuss Lunch became a permanent solution, they would offer employment to existing staff, pay monthly facility rent, and continue to fund our free or reduced population with a combination of self-funding and their Love of Lunch Fund 501(c)(3). Goals are dreams with deadlines. My friend had a dream. We need to create a deadline. Every day that goes by is another day. Children are not being fed the right kind of food to flourish. If we don't challenge ourselves, we can't change. Change is good. Innovation and evolution are good. We need to be in a position to make a long-term decision for our community and, most importantly, our children.
Time.
All right, next up, John Blenke, followed by Stephanie Chalwa.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent, members of the board. This is, I believe, in spite of my political activity, the first time that I've addressed your board. I thought I put a suit on.
Turn the mic off.
And hello to everybody out there. Maybe there's the odd grandparent out there like me, and that's one of the reasons that I rise this evening. The other good thing to see is members of the Food Lunch Service, and I appreciated especially the passion with which one or two of those members spoke. So for those of you who don't know me, my involvement in politics, I served on the RTM. I served two terms on the Finance Board, the Board of Investment and Taxation. I ran for selectman. I ran for the State House, the State Senate, and last year for State Treasurer. I currently serve on the transition team for the State Treasurer. For those who do know me, you may be thinking that I have further ambitions. The answer to that is I have no current plans. But I rise to speak this evening to support the pilot program. I have two grandchildren coming through the system, and I want to make sure that they get as much out of this wonderful school system as my children did when we first came here 35 years ago. And a major component of that is making sure that they get fed properly. Second reason for rising this evening is that in my term on the Finance Board, I served on the School Lunch Fund. And at that time, the hue and cry was that the deficit in the fund was rising, and this was a matter of some concern to our board and to the Board of Ed as well. And I was chosen and, in fact, volunteered because a lot of noise was around at the time about outsourcing, and I was determined that there would be no outsourcing to try and solve whatever problems there were in the School Lunch Fund. It was known at the time as Fire on Friday and Hire on Monday, and I thought that balancing the books on the back of the workers in the school lunch program was absolutely the wrong way to go. So I was part of the little team that initiated some changes, increasing prices on some of the food items, improving marketing, and we got the participation rate up and managed to get the deficit in the School Lunch Fund to reduce. So there is something about politics in Greenwich, which is that we pay a lot of attention to cost and not enough attention to value. And I want to say that the value of food is much more important than the cost. And so if, after this pilot program, you determine, Board of Ed, that it is going to be too expensive, then let me know, and I will put in a word with my former colleagues on the Finance Board, and who knows, may even run to improve the situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Stephanie Chalwa, and followed by Carrie Huxta.
I'm Stephanie Chalwa, and I'm a mother of a second grader at Glenville Elementary. I'm an internal physician assistant, and I work at an outpatient practice in Norwalk. I'm extremely alarmed at the lunch options that Greenwich provides for our children for the past few years. I've taken photos of these pictures, and I have, in fact, emailed some of the board members here of what we are serving our children. Why are we continuing to serve our children highly-processed foods that are full of salt, fats, oils, sugar, high in carbs, artificial flavors and colors, and ingredients that are, in fact, banned in some other countries? These types of foods are causing childhood obesity, diabetes, and chronic disease, and moreover, submits poor eating habits for life. As a healthcare professional, here are some alarming facts directly correlated to what we feed our children. Childhood obesity is an epidemic. In ages six to 11-year-olds, obesity has more than tripled and quadrupled among teens aged 12 to 19 since the late 80s. The CDC states that the immediate health risk of children, childhood obesity, correlate to those kids having higher blood pressure, higher cholesterol, both of which are risk factors for cardiovascular disease. They're at higher risk for glucose intolerance, insulin resistance, leading to diabetes later in life, and for developing breathing issues such as sleep apnea and asthma, along with fatty liver disease, gallstones, joint problems, and musculoskeletal discomfort from being overweight. Kids not only experience physical issues, but psychological issues as well, such as anxiety and depression from that excess weight. A recent study from the American Cancer Society and the Lancet Journal has shown that 12 cancers directly fueled by obesity are on the rise in the United States in young adults. What used to be cancers of the older population, adults in 60 to 7-year-olds, are now being seen in young adults ages 24 to 49. Such of these cancers are colorectal, endometrial, pancreatic, and gallbladder, which have nearly doubled in millennials as compared to the same age in the baby boomer population at the same age. If this is already happening for the millennials, can you imagine what it's going to be for our children right now when they reach their 20s and 40s? Another study in the New England Journal of Medicine predicts that children will be children that, children seem to day, will be obese by the age 35 in 60% of the population in the United States, and half of that weight occurring during their childhood. This should be a wake-up call for parents, doctors, policymakers, and the public. All this is directly related to what the kids are eating, thanks to lack of physical activity and more screen time and iPads. We should not continue to feed these children these highly-processed foods given by our current vendor, otherwise we are responsible for their future health scares. We should encourage more fresh foods, vegetables, real meats, and cheeses. They are a future, and we have to lead them by example. Making healthy food options is viable, and although we can't control what's done at home...
Time.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Carrie Huxta, followed by Rebecca Comizio.
Good evening. My name is Carrie Huxta, and I am the mother of two boys at Glenville Elementary. I wanted to take this opportunity to inform you of some frustrations regarding inconsistencies with our current food service provider. I allow my children to occasionally purchase lunch at school. I cringe at the fact that I allow my children to eat awful food. I'm embarrassed. But it does provide them with a sense of independence and self-confidence that makes me justify my decision. The lunch menu often lists the daily special, yet when my children attempt to make their purchase, that item is not available. For a young child, this is absolutely devastating. They come home upset and hungry, and it's another reason why I do not support the current provider on a regular basis. Just this past week, prior to vacation, the Friday special was pizza bagels. However, each child reported the bagel version was not available. The fifth grader was given the boat-style pizza, and the second grader was given the soggy, floppy, square-shaped. Clearly, the menu was unreliable, which is troublesome. Also, there are supposed to be a handful of daily options, like bagels, cereal, some butter, but they are not all always displayed. I had lunch with my older son this Wednesday, and I have a photo of what is advertised currently on the school menu as fresh veggies and fruits. It looks delicious and wholesome, yet in reality, what he got was peaches and syrup and dried cranberries. It's misleading, false advertising, and unacceptable to be considered fresh. It was also mentioned tonight by a previous speaker that meals do not exceed 10% of saturated fat, but the drumstick that I brought with me in itself has 13%. Lastly, and that fact came off of the website last night. Lastly, it is disconcerting to see how much uneaten food is thrown into the trash. Students are forced to take a milk and fruit even if they do not eat it. This leads me to believe we are not serving our children what food choices they enjoy. I also feel the food is thrown away because it is simply not yummy. I brought with me tonight a serving of lunch that was served at school, but I suspect that you do not need to try it to determine it belongs in the trash. Please respect and consider the overwhelming support to provide our students with nutritious, satisfying fuel for their growing bodies.
Thank you, Derek. All right, next up is Rebecca Comizio, followed by Julie Dischamps.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much. My name is Rebecca Comizio. I'm going to talk really fast to stick within my time. I'm the mother of four children, two GHS graduates, and two current students, and a school psychologist who works as an... Better food supports better learners. According to a national analysis, about 2.6 million American children and adolescents have been diagnosed with anxiety and/or depression. That's five to eight times as many meeting the criteria for that diagnosis than was true 50 years ago. The school district budget is $22.5 million for special education costs this academic year, almost $2 million more than was spent on special ed in 2016-17. The rise in childhood mental health challenges surely contributes to the ever-growing need for special education services and support. I am not going to say that food is the cause of this alarming increase, however, as advocates look for evidence-based interventions, prevention ranks among the most crucial. Some preventative measures are so basic that they are easy to overlook. Researchers are now realizing that there is not only a psychological connection, but a biochemical/physical connection between what we eat, the way it makes us feel, and our mental health. For children whose brains are still developing, this is an even more important consideration. The less rich food our kids eat, the more empty calories creates poor energy resources for learning and feeling well. For example, recent studies show that a healthy diet may not only prevent depression, but could effectively treat depression once it started. Researchers found that after 12 weeks, the people who improved their diet showed significantly happier moods than those who received social sport alone. A larger national study in nutritional neuroscience drew similar conclusions and showed that the boost in mood lasted six months. In a study of 120 kids and adolescents consuming highly processed and sugary food was associated with a higher prevalence of diagnosed attention-deficit hyperactivity disorder. The study also found that children who ate fewer healthy foods were more likely to have symptoms of ADHD, even after accounting for potentially confounding variables. While these associations don't prove causality, they suggest that diet could play a role in ADHD's development through yet unknown mechanisms. More compelling evidence, studies find that bad diets negatively affect our gut microbiome, a major source of the production of serotonin, a neurotransmitter found in the brain. Good and bad bacteria in our guts have complex ways of communicating with our brains and changing our moods. As a community who cares about the future, we need to do what we can to raise mentally, academically, emotionally, and behaviorally healthy children, starting with providing clean and healthy foods and removing subpar overly processed food devoid of nutritional value could have a ripple effect that neuroscience and psychology are only now beginning to understand. Thank you.
All right, so next up is Julie Deschamps, and then Halah Saamad.
My name is Julie Deschamps. I'm an Eastern parent and member of the PTAC Green Schools Committee. While it is certainly important to consider the quality and nutrition of school food, let's not overlook the safety and sustainability of service ware. How the food is served has critical implications for the health of our children and the environmental footprint of the school district. Lunches are currently served on styrofoam trays. While this food ware is cheap, its use has significant cross to our students' health and the environment. One component, styrene, is classified as a possible carcinogen and neurotoxin. Styrene can leach into foods and be ingested when students scrape the trays with utensils. Most at risk are the students eligible for free and reduced lunch, who are exposed to styrene every day for years. The production of styrofoam creates a trail of pollutants for only minutes of use, and these styrofoam trays are also wasteful and hazardous to dispose. Our town no longer accepts this plastic for recycling, so now, more than 468,000 foam trays used annually in our schools, that's almost a half a million, will be tossed in the trash. These trays are incinerated at a cost to taxpayers and the detriment of our air and soil quality. No-Fuss Lunch does not use styrofoam trays. However, it is essential that the district ensures the safest and most sustainable food ware. Last spring, Green Schools collaborated with food services on a pilot at Cos Cob School to reduce cafeteria waste and explore safer options. While investigating alternatives, we had several samples tested. Molded fiber trays like this by Chinette contain highly persistent fluorinated additives, or PFAS, that are associated with serious health problems, cancer, developmental issues, and decreased immune response in children. The Board and the administration should not allow these wares in our cafeterias. Two recommended options are single-use paper boats and reusable wares. Disposable paper boats, which both food services and No-Fuss Lunch provide with some foods, have tested negative for fluorinated additives and are a safer option, but still produce considerable waste. The most responsible alternative is a reusable ware like a polypropylene basket or durable tray. As demonstrated by the pilot, reusables are safer for student health, have a smaller environmental footprint, and result in a significant reduction of waste, up to 60%. I urge you to scrutinize safer, more eco-friendly reusable wares in this debate over No-Fuss Lunch. The Board has been sent a detailed report, and it is hoped that it will take its recommendations under serious consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Halah Saamad.
That's okay. Everybody does. Hi, good evening. My name is Halah Saamad. I am the mother of a fifth grade and third grade student at Glenville, as well as a daughter who attended Glenville, K through fourth. I've been visiting the lunchroom ever since my children were in kindergarten back in 2013. Glenville does allow parents to come in, drop in into the cafeteria, and I remember asking my children before visiting the cafeteria if they had any interest in buying lunch, and I received a very quick and certain no. It didn't faze me at the time because they were still very young, but eventually I made my way to the cafeteria to visit them for lunch, and I very quickly learned why they were adamantly refusing school lunch. Honestly, it looked awful. The options were completely unappealing, and it takes a lot to make a simple food like pizza appear unappealing. Therefore, after six years at Glenville School, none of my three children have ever purchased lunch. Over the years, I've made many visits to the cafeteria, and I always leave with a horrible feeling that the children who do buy lunch are, one, eating unhealthy options with very little nutritional value, and, two, eating unappealing options that look and taste bad and therefore get thrown out. I have a background in public health, and to me, this appears to be a true public health problem. For the parents who don't have the resources or availability to pack lunches, there must be a better way to provide healthy and tasty options for their children. It's a true shame that a prosperous town like Greenwich offers such poor lunch options to our students. We all want to see our children thrive academically and physically, and we need to make some serious changes to the current food program in order to help them reach their full potential. Thanks.
Thank you very much. All right, so what we're going to do is go to the list of people who signed up for non-agenda items, and then we'll circle back if there's anybody else that wants to address the board. So Suzanne Sullivan, followed by Janet McMahon.
My name is Suzanne Sullivan, and I am here on behalf of the more than 1,200 parents, educators, and students who signed the petition to express their dissatisfaction with the Board of Ed's superintendent hiring process. Mr. Mayo has asked that we all move on from this decision, and we intend to respect his wishes. We are not here tonight to debate the decision or discuss the enormous positive impact Mr. Mayo has had on Greenwich students, teachers, and the district overall. We all already know these things. We are here to speak about the larger issues at hand, ones that transcend Ralph Mayo and the choice for superintendent. We are here to ensure that our voices are being heard and that the Board of Ed understands how dissatisfied the community is with its lack of communication on the selection process, the lack of transparency in the criteria used to make the decision, the way the announcement was made, and the lack of accountability that has been shown since then. I, along with the 1,200 supporters of the petition, still have questions about the processes used. Even though we are moving on from the decision, we feel that the Board of Ed still owes us an explanation. Our questions include: How is it that a board chosen by the electorate made a decision that so blatantly contradicts the will of the majority? What were the specific criteria used for making the decision? We have heard a lot about Dr. Jones's qualifications, and we do not doubt them, but we still don't know what she had over Mr. Mayo. Why was the decision announced the way it was at 4:30 PM on a Friday afternoon, weeks before the next Board of Education meeting tonight, with February break in between? Why was there not unity in the decision? The fact that the decision was not unanimous is unprecedented and speaks volumes, and the Board of Ed owes the community answers. The Board of Ed is an elected body, and its members are accountable to their constituents. This was not evident in the process. So while we continue to be frustrated with what has happened and wish there had been a different outcome, we have broader concerns about the inherent issues that were clearly revealed during this process. The community wants transparency, accountability, and the opportunity to provide input, and for the Board of Ed to hear us. This decision went completely against the thoughts and opinions of our community, including teachers, and that simply cannot happen again. Greenwich is a place with much to offer, wonderful schools, amazing teachers, and strong community programs, but the revolving door of superintendents has wounded our district, and this was a missed opportunity to fix that. I hope the Board of Ed is hearing us now, and to everyone else listening, I urge you to keep speaking, make the Board of Ed hear you, get involved, and have a voice. We wish Dr. Jones success as she takes on this very difficult role, and sincerely hope Mr. Mayo chooses to stay on in the Greenwich Public Schools. I thank you for your time.
Next up, Janet McMahon, followed by Claire Coogallin.
Good evening, and thank you, members of the Board of Education, Chairman Bernstein, Mr. Mayo, and others. My name is Janet McMahon, and I am a parent of two North Street School children. I am a member of the PTA, as well as a member of the RTM in District Eight. I'm not here only to talk about my disappointment in the Board's decision to not hire Mr. Mayo for the superintendent position. Although absent any adequate explanation as to why he was passed over, I think I will forever be confused and upset by this decision. Nevertheless, I will honor Mr. Mayo's wishes to let go and move on, and I would like to extend a warm welcome to Dr. Jones to the district. I wish her nothing but the best, as her success is our success. That being said, however, I was just looking at the list of vacancies on the GPS job database today, and I noticed that as of this afternoon, there's still a job posting for headmaster of GPS. Again, we have before us a very capable and committed administrator who knows the Greenwich community intimately, is familiar with our schools, our teachers, our students, and our parents, and that person, again resoundingly, is Mr. Ralph Mayo. If Mr. Mayo is willing, please do not pass him over again. Please do not make the same mistake. I urge you to do right by Greenwich this time and extend an offer to Mr. Mayo for Greenwich High School Headmaster. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Claire Coogallin.
Claire Coogallin, New Lebanon School. I'm wearing some New Lebanon spirit ware. Just wanted to say a heartfelt thank you to the members of the Board, past, present, the Cabinet, everyone who has pulled together as a team to have the school become a reality. Thank you. The children, we're so happy. So thank you very much.
So is there anybody that would like to address the Board?
There's a second sheet.
There's a second sheet? All right, bring it on in.
Just a couple names on it.
Take the names, and then we'll see if there's other folks. So I'm guessing this is you, Thomas?
It's me. Thank you. Good evening, Board members and community. My name is Tom Malucci. Thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight on an important topic. I've been very lucky to be a part of the Greenwich community for many years. I've coached the youth program. I worked at Greenwich Hospital for over 22 years. My background is in healthcare. I've studied exercise physiology and physical therapy. I'm currently the Director of Physical Medicine at the hospital. I've come to talk a little bit tonight about health and well-being of our children, the importance of good nutrition, and providing all of them an opportunity to not only learn about it, but also to make the choices regardless of their economic status. As you know, nutrition is one of the key components in our life. Especially as a child, the access to good nutrition is essential. It provides the key building blocks to proper physical and mental development. Lack of proper nutrition leads to numerous health-related problems, such as obesity, heart disease, cancer, and type 2 diabetes, which are perpetuated by patterns of learned unhealthy eating. As a coach, I've witnessed those kids who, some who are grossly overweight, and seen the struggles they've had on and off the field. As a healthcare provider, I see the damaging effects of poor nutrition on the human body, the complications and delays in healing from these diseases, and the exorbitant cost and the burden put on society that these ailments cause. Along with the physical ailments, poor nutrition has been linked to child's inability to learn, higher absenteeism, and lower grades. Greenwich is a very rich community, and we're all lucky to be a part of it. It's not rich because there are many individuals who are financially well-off. We're rich because we have a strong community of people who care and get involved, a strong community of innovative thinkers who have made the right decisions, who have been leaders in their fields, who have worked to set and be the gold standard. So I ask you, as the elected officials of this Board, the officials that we as a community chose to help set and achieve these standards, to be innovative, to think outside the box, to stand up and do what is right for our children. I challenge you, not in a confrontational way, but I challenge you to look at your mission, vision, values, and belief statement, and hold yourself to those standards. That statement says, "It's the mission of Greenwich Public Schools to educate all students to the highest level of academic achievement, to enable them to reach and expand their potential, and to prepare them to become productive, responsible, ethical, creative, and compassionate members of society." Also within that statement, within the document, there's a vision of the graduate, which talks about the students acquiring a core body of knowledge and becoming responsible for their own mental and physical health. If that's part of your vision, then it's your responsibility to teach them, give them the tools, and give them the access regardless of their financial status. I realize there may be added cost to a healthier meal plan, but it's estimated that the national cost to treat these problems is over $3.2 trillion. Studies show that every dollar spent on a wellness program generates about $3.27 in medical, lower medical costs, and $2.73 in less absenteeism. Please be innovative, be leaders, and help make positive changes by offering them a healthy choice, which will affect the rest of their lives. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so the next and last speaker that signed up is Alyssa Diamond Fields. If there's other people that want to address the Board, I'd ask that you go and line up against the wall over there by the piano, just so we can keep this moving, because we do actually have a meeting to conduct tonight.
Hi there, hi everyone. Good evening. Thank you so much to the Board for hearing us. I'm going to try and keep it brief. A lot of people did cover some of the stuff that I wanted to say. So my name is Alyssa Diamond Fields, and I have a nine-year-old at Jolene Curtis. I've been co-chairing the PTA Health and Wellness Committee for the past three years and been a member for four. I'm here speaking tonight as myself, not for the Board. And I'm also a family chiropractor for coming up on 20 years, and I work with a lot of my patients often on healing and managing chronic and inflammatory health issues. And when we're working in that world, it is the very first thing we look at is cleaning up our diet and reducing processed foods, increasing whole, clean, nutrient-dense, and locally sourced foods. We have a very sick generation of kids right now, as many here have alluded to. According to the CDC, 54% of our children are dealing with a chronic health issue today. Asthma, allergies, ADHD, diabetes, childhood cancers are all part of this and are all on the rise. In the 70s, that number was 12%. Many issues and variables obviously are at play, including obviously many potential toxic exposures. We know that these conditions are related to inflammation, and there's a growing body of evidence relating processed foods and pesticides specifically with inflammation and gut imbalances. Most commercial packaged foods and processed foods contain high levels of glyphosate, which is a drying agent and a main ingredient in weed killer Roundup. GMO products are saturated with it, and it has been listed by the World Health Organization as a probable carcinogen. A landmark lawsuit was recently won against Monsanto for Roundup causing cancer in a school groundskeeper who was spraying the substance in large quantities over the summer. This ingredient is found in many of our foods that are offered in our cafeterias, and this is the one reason that I limit my daughter to purchasing only one meal per week as a treat. She does enjoy the food. I have seen many, many great improvements in the food quality over the last few years, and really grateful to see more locally sourced fresh foods and less processed foods. Really appreciate that. You know, but we've seen in our committee discussions over the years that parent buy-in is one of the biggest issues in having our ends meet, and not to keep coming up short fiscally. We have certainly seen great improvements over the past few years.
30 seconds.
Thank you. There are school districts around the country who are serving locally sourced fresh and clean whole foods and making ends meet and profits. It's abundantly clear in the 2017 survey results that higher-quality foods will lead to more buy-in, even at a higher cost. I know contracts that we have currently only allow for the cheapest options as opposed to perhaps the healthiest. My hope, and for probably many here, is that you will really take the time to explore all of the growing options... all of the growing options out there, and even perhaps how you might improve the current contract to allow for higher-quality local foods. Thank you so much.
Thank you. If you could introduce yourself, just because you're not signed up, so we can get it.
Absolutely, yes. Hi, everyone. My name is Stephanie Martin. I am a Riverside parent. I want to say thank you, the opportunity to talk tonight, but more importantly, thank you so much for considering this pilot program. I went online and looked at the No Fuss Lunch program, and it looks really exciting. And thank you for looking into it. I think that's really wonderful. We're new to the district this year. I have two kids in the program, in the schools, and more than that, I'm on the Health and Wellness Committee. I used to be a physical trainer. I ran a health and fitness company, and most recently, I was the CEO of the Glycemic Index Foundation in Australia. And I just wanted to explain to people, because I spent years studying what happens to our bodies physiologically when we eat processed foods, and why that negatively impacts our academic performance, academic, athletic, almost all performance. When we eat processed foods, like a bagel, it doesn't even have to be something like you think, a cookie or junk food. It can be a bagel. When you eat something highly processed like that, your stomach immediately pulls out the sugar, and your blood glucose levels spike. And so, think about kids after lunch and sitting down, and they've had a very highly processed meal. Because it's pre-processed, your stomach doesn't have to work as hard to process it right away. So the glucose pulls out quickly, and your glucose spikes. Now, to counteract that, your body produces insulin, so your insulin spikes as well. And then, because you have spiked insulin, it brings all the glucose into the cells, and you crash. And that's why kids have trouble concentrating in the afternoon, or I have trouble concentrating in the afternoon when I have a particularly high-carb meal or a highly-processed meal. So even some things that we think of as healthy, like maybe a hot dog with a bun, it can still, I mean, hot dogs are listed as carcinogens by the World Health Organization. So it doesn't have to be chips and cookies. So looking at, when I went to look at the No Fuss Lunches, I thought they had some really exciting options, and I just want to say thank you for giving us the opportunity to talk about it, and also for looking at it. Thanks.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me talk. My name is Mary Flynn. I am an RTM member, which is why I'm here, but I was also a member of the Health and Wellness Committee 14 years, 12 years ago, 13 years ago, and they were the same problems. I'm sitting here listening, and it's, you know, it's better that there's more locally sourced, but we wanted, like, the chicken nuggets that don't have the bad things in them, and for some reason, Greenwich is not finding those unless, and now you're talking about outsourcing, and you'll lose this whole infrastructure and, like, the chef who cares about the people. But they're not, they're getting the food from Mr. Hopkins' office, and, you know, perhaps they could order, they could get better-quality food. I know it's available, because I know 12 years ago, when I was on the committee, it was available. So I think that perhaps before you outsource and lose this very valuable infrastructure that you have, you might consider insisting on changing the quality of the foods that we order as a town. That was one thing. And then styrofoam, we use styrofoam? I mean, you know, there's a number of changes that I think should go. So I hope that, rather than outsource, you'll consider insisting on better quality. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, if there's no other speakers, we're going to move on from our community comments to our monthly reports, starting with the superintendent.
Thank you, Peter. My superintendent's report's going to be a little bit shorter tonight than normal, but I wanted to say that we had a very exciting and emotional day on Wednesday, when we officially opened the new New Lebanon School. Standing in the beautiful new cafeteria, members of the building committee greeted the students and their teachers, and presented an important message to our children. If we work together toward a common goal, there are no boundaries as to what can be accomplished. Let me say that again. If we work together toward a common goal, there are no boundaries as to what can be accomplished. It's a great message for the children, not just of New Lebanon, for all of our children. And I'll stop there. We are holding an open house this Saturday, beginning at 10:00 a.m., for the community members to stop by and see this gem of a school. At 1:00 p.m., we will hold a second open house for parents who are, who may be interested in our IB Magnet Program. No matter what your interest, please come see this beautiful 21st-century school and the possibilities for our other schools if we follow the master facilities plan. Budget. We are still in the budget season, folks, and I wanted to remind you that we are going to have another presentation of our budget to the RTM Education, Finance, and Budget Overview Committee on Monday, March 4th, at 7:00 p.m. in the Staff Development Room at the Havemeyer Building. So that will continue. There's also been some consternation in the community about our Windrose Community Connections Program, and speculation as to will these programs even exist next year, and I can assure you that both programs are needed. They serve a group of students that need these necessary programs to achieve, and we will be ready to announce their locations at our next meeting in March. We need to, some time to tell the other staff of our plans prior to making an announcement. We will be using town Greenwich buildings for these two programs, so we don't anticipate entering any rental agreements or need of any additional assurance. There may be some maintenance costs based on the chosen locations, but they will be minor. And that's what I have for you tonight.
All right, thank you very much. All right, so next up is reports of officers, committees, and Mr. Scher.
Ralph, I'm sorry, I must have missed the memo. What are you talking about with concerns about Windrose? I don't, what are you talking about? Was there somebody who started some rumors somewhere?
No, there was just concerns about where they were going to be located, and I wanted to make sure.
Okay, because that's totally different than...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I get it, I know.
So...
But that also turned into, yes, rumors about maybe those programs wouldn't exist next year, and that's not true.
Yeah, that's not true. That's a board decision, and that's not true.
Right, right. That's why I wanted to make that statement, Peter.
Okay, I just, I didn't know where that was coming from. I kept...
Yes.
Okay, fine. Location is the question.
Right.
And you're announcing a location by...
March.
Do you have a date?
At the March meeting, I will announce locations.
I see.
All right, so reports of officers, committees, and liaisons, I can come down the table, Ms. Olson?
So the, feel free to correct me if I make a mistake here, Kim Eaves. Our DTAC, which is the Greenwich Distinguished Teachers Award Committee, that we are still taking completed packets, and the deadline to submit those completed packets for nominees are, is March 7th at 5:00 o'clock p.m. The nominees will then be announced at their respective schools, April 24th. April 25th will be a ceremony, and then May 7th will be the final, final ceremony. So the date to keep on the calendar now is March 7th, and we have so many distinguished teachers in these schools, and it's a really, it's a big honor to be on this committee, and please send those forth.
Dr. Francis?
All right, I've got a few, but first, oh, Claire was still here a minute ago, but I wanted to say thank you, and I'm going to try not to cry, but, you know, I think the input that parents make into our schools is unbelievable, and certainly, when it's come to New Lebanon, and I know I learned the appreciation of this when my kids were at Glenville, and we were going through our fight to get our school and to have it happen, and I will never stop thanking Marlene Gilbert for the work that she did for that, and Claire, I think, was a huge part in terms of New Lev, so I wanted to say that first, sorry. In terms of community, I mean, whatever, committees that I'm on, alliance, a couple announcements, reaching out grants to teachers, February 27th, those applications need to go into the district. This, you know, what the alliance, I think, does for our schools in terms of supporting innovation, new ideas, so many kinds of things, you know, I think it's a great thing, and I encourage teachers to come forward and to bring their ideas and ask for money, because they get it. Trivia Challenge tomorrow night. I think it's sold out, but one of the big purposes, one of the big goals that they have is to raise funds for scholarships for our avid students that have successfully gone on to college, but who are, you know, struggling financially to make ends meet, and they have a big gap between what they're getting typically and what they really need. And the alliance is a big push, and they have a great matching fund for that, so you can go right onto their website to donate to that great cause. And then March 13th at the First Bank of Greenwich, our middle schoolers are doing an art display at the bank from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., so I can certainly go out and see all the great work that our middle schoolers are doing. That's for that. Curriculum Council, we went to that meeting last time, it was a great meeting. I think the two big things, which was great, one was looking at the digital tools, and the other, and I was thinking about this a lot when Mr. Healy was speaking, was the capacities division of the graduate, our goals in terms of what we see, and I was just thinking, wow, that might be a good person or someone from here to bring in, as we're looking at how do we take this from the high school, bring it to the middle schools, and the elementary schools, and really bring this across the district, and it looks like they've been doing a fair amount of work on that, so that's... Oh, you're still over there, thank you, having you work on that. And I feel like there's one more, I'm sorry, oh, oh, the other is just a policy, but we'll go over that later.
The vision of the graduate actually hangs in every classroom in this building, because I've seen it, been in many classrooms in this building. So New Lebanon is on time, open. Thank you to Claire and the entire building committee, and the administration, the Board, and the town who dragged kicking and screaming, they finally let us open the building. Under budget, so that's something I can't stress enough. It is, this is basically Phase 1. Phase 2 is the demolition of the old building, creating the parking lot, rehabilitating the field. So this is a work in progress. Hopefully, in the fall, it will look even more complete with its entire campus in order. But it was amazing to be there with the kids yesterday. I hope everybody can come on Saturday, be in that building, feel the, you know, feel the labor of our love. I actually mentioned, so I got to talk to the kids, and after having them do a soundcheck of the building, and they were really loud. I mentioned that, you know, out of all the hundreds of hours of meetings that I do every year, it was really nice to see something physically done and used by the kids. That really was kind of heartwarming for me. Anyway, I was touched by that moment, but I'm not going to cry, Claire. Not going to cry. All right, so anything else, any other reports? No? All right, so moving on, we are at our discussion items. The first is the preschool program report.
You have a copy of the report, which is an update on what's going on in our preschool program. I think there are a couple of things that we just need to keep in mind when you're reading it and reviewing the preschool program. The reason we have preschool in Greenwich is because we are required under the IDEA to provide services to our young children ages 3 to 5 who've been identified with disabilities, and we serve them in an integrated preschool model. So the classes are created based on the number of young children with disabilities that we serve, and then we surround them with typical peers. The classes are taught, as you know, by a certified special education teacher with early childhood certification. This year, due to the number of kids that we have, we are going to be opening our 14th class starting in March. This is the most classes we've had since I've been here, which is a long time, and these are incoming three-year-olds. The difficulty with the program and its projections is that in some cases, we're building budgets and projecting classes before the children have been born. So we have to know them in order to plan for them, and we don't usually know them in terms of their full numbers until sometimes into the year. I have with me Amy DeNicolà Hickman, who's our preschool coordinator. Currently, our classes are at Hamilton Avenue. We are opening the third classroom in at New Lebanon, and at Parkway, Old Greenwich, and North Street. And our plan is to continue in those locations next year. If you have any questions about the day-to-day running of the classes, we are fully committed to a project-based learning model in the preschool. We've been working with our community partners on doing that. Both Amy and I sit on the town-wide school readiness committee, so we are trying to integrate the services with our, with our community preschool partners. New Lebanon and Hamilton Avenue, the classes are in the buildings due, as a result of the planning of the building. So when Hamilton Avenue was opened, it was opened with the understanding there'd be four full-time preschools there that would give enrollment priority to Hamilton Avenue students. The same is true of New Lebanon. When New Lebanon opens back in September of 19, it will open with three full-day preschools as part of the plan of the building. It's not new classrooms. It would come out of the allocations of classrooms that we'd already planned to open. We would just move classrooms there. The parents know that they will be full-day classrooms. I gave you a document where we answered the written questions we have, so Amy and I are here to answer any other questions you may have. And I'd ask you to please speak up, the acoustics in here are terrible.
We're hoping to rebuild this one. Ms. Rabin?
I have two questions. Could I ask you about...
And sorry, Mary, if these questions were in the written, we had so many emails over the past couple of days, which I'll refer to in my agenda item, that I might have missed a response. Where could we get a list of whose, or what makes up the Early Childhood Readiness Council of Greenwich?
That's, I can give that to you. That's a requirement of us accepting as a town, school readiness funds. The flow-through dollars come through us into the partner that we have, which is Family Centers, but we can give you a list of the people who come regularly. It crosses agencies. We have people from the library, people from social services, people from a number of town agencies, as well as representatives from the community preschools.
Thank you. And then I noticed that the children, some, I forget what page it is, Jennifer has it, there's not page numbers, but the social-emotional skills are not meeting the targets, and I just wanted to know a little bit more about that, especially in relationship to the comment that's on top of, at least in the PDF, page 8, that student achievement increases when students have a strong foundation in social-emotional learning. I'm trying to figure out where they're not meeting the target. It's number 7, SPP indicator 7A, positive social-emotional skills, 38.5%, the target is 55.5, and it's checked off, did not meet. And then B is the same thing, positive social-emotional skills, 42.1. Is that from, I'm sorry?
That's in 1415.
Oh, it's from 1415.
Oh, sorry.
So the most recent, we are. My bad. That's okay.
Mary, I'm talking as well about the target, the target that's set by the state of Connecticut for proficiency on the Connecticut state performance. The target was 18%, and we did very well at 32.2% relative to the state target. Are you following me so far?
Are you looking at 2016, 17?
Okay, hold on, let me give you the page. It's the fifth page at the top. The state target is 18% for proficiency. Okay, so that seems very, very low. Could you explain why that target is so low? And our 32%... And our 32%, what does that really mean? Does that mean that 32% of our preschoolers reached the target?
Not our preschoolers. Not our preschool, that's the, that's on the Bergans', and it's on for the students with special needs. Isn't that what she's looking at? Oh, okay. That's what they're looking at. I'm sorry, I'm looking at a different. You're looking at the performance of students in grade three with special needs on the state assessments.
So if you have the page, if you have the page that shows a chart about participation, which I really don't care about at all, if you have that chart on participation rates...
What we were giving you is, these are students with disabilities in grade three. It's to show, there was a question about what's the impact of kids who go to preschool. So what Amy did was look at the students in grade three with disabilities to show how we exceed the state targets for that group of kids. Most of those kids, or many of those kids in grade three, have been through our preschool. So the question was, what's the impact of preschool? If you look, we meet and exceed the targets for grade three students with disabilities.
I was able to look back at the actual students, the names of the students in grade three that we had in our preschool, and track their scores, their actual scores, because obviously I'm privy to those names, and look at their scores on those particular assessments, and say that their scores were higher than the scores of the children on the state assessments. So the children attended...
State assessments attended preschools in other communities.
In my preschool classrooms, the children scored higher than what was targeted on this statewide target. They scored higher, and that came out of our classroom, preschool. They scored higher.
Relative to preschoolers in other communities in Connecticut.
Relative to the target that was set by the, by the state, they scored higher on those assessments. The ones that were in our preschool class.
But I'd love to know if the state publishes performance data on preschoolers across Connecticut. How is Greenwich doing if you look at the state?
That's the other report. They set the targets for the preschoolers on the other report. I was trying to look at the third graders.
Can you follow up with the data?
I'm sorry, I don't follow, but I will do more research, and if you have the other report, just send it out an email.
And I'm sorry, I don't know what happened to the page numbers on this. If you go to the page that said, what did we achieve? It's the fourth page in. It says, what did we achieve? Those show the, our performance of preschoolers from 2014-15 through 2016-17, which is the last time we get that date, it always lags from the state. That compares our preschoolers on the state assessments to the preschoolers around the state. So if you look at, for example, 2016-17, the state set the target of 55% of the students would meet the social-emotional skills required, and we had, we exceeded that target. There have also been questions asked of us over the years, what difference does going to our preschool make? So what Amy did was take our actual preschoolers, who are now third graders, and look at them compared to other third graders. And those kids do better than the other third graders. So one is the third-grade kids who've been to our preschool, the others are preschoolers.
The IEP people, or just the, she talked about IEP to IEP? I'm sorry, she talked about IEP to IEP? Or what about the students who are non-IEP, who attend our preschool versus those who are non-IEP who attend another preschool? Do you have that data? No.
I didn't do, I didn't do students...
You just did IEP to IEP?
I just did IEP to IEP because that's the data I had here.
Okay. And is the IEP, non-Grenwich preschool, is that students who you know have provided, attended two or more years of preschool, or is it all IEP students?
I just did it as compared to the state average that they gave us from the report.
Okay, but we have this data inside Greenwich ourselves, right? Because we're only talking about Greenwich. So we would know what happens within our district, right? That's the question that you raised, Mary, that's been asked many times, which is, how does a Greenwich student do who does one of three things? One, attends our preschool. Two, attends another preschool. Three, attends no preschool. Well, I think you would want it, IEP and non-IEP, you'd want it both, so it should be a six-box.
We can give you, what we've given you here is the IEP students. What we have not done, which we could do, but it's going to take some work, but we could actually track our preschoolers, who we refer to as our typical preschoolers, and how they did compared to kids in your two categories. I can tell you...
I would make it three. I would make it three.
If we took out the IEP students, so it would be...
Yeah, I would do, I would just do IEP regular, IEP students who attended, okay, yeah, you could do it that way, too. You could do it IEP and non-IEP, and then do it as a four-box.
We did it, I want to say, 10 years ago. We did it with the third graders, and what we found was, for better or for worse, 10 years ago, it didn't matter where you went to preschool, it mattered the risk factors. So that...
What's a risk factor?
So no matter where you went to preschool, if you were either a second language learner, a student of poverty, or a student with a disability, you did not do as well. And it didn't matter if you went to our preschool or...
Somebody else's.
Somebody else's. That's really what the impact was. We can certainly do that same thing again now, and look at the typical kids who go and their third-grade SBA scores to see if it's still holding true.
So I second the request for the data, because I have the broken record that asks for it continually.
Well, I think we all...
Yeah, Dr. Francis.
And I guess I would, oh, I'm not supposed to push. I guess I would take that one step farther, and I think I had asked, what are the goals for the preschool, you know, short-term, long-term? And I think the answer was to meet sort of the state standards. I just think, one, if that's it, I would put that as goals at the beginning of the report. But I think, you know, to look at the specific numbers, I think some of these numbers we should be aiming for higher, and we seem to perform higher than the state expectations. And I think to look at our, our non-IEP students should be part of our goals as well. So I think getting some specific goals in here would be nice, and I think to look at that data and then to see where we go from there.
We can certainly do that. And you know historically, again, I don't know how many of you remember, but when we first started taking typical kids, back when I was much younger, we actually auditioned kids for those slots. Because what we were looking for were typical students who would be good language and social skill models for kids with disabilities, because we couldn't get enough kids to come. This last go-around, I think we had between three and four applicants for every slot we had available. It's become a really popular program because of the quality of it. So it used to be a much more selective group of typical kids. It's much more heterogeneous now, so we can certainly do it again and get those numbers for you.
Peter.
I've got three different questions, so I'll put one up in there if somebody else wants to go, then we can come back. Mary, the first question I have is, yeah, right, no page number. What, in this report, it constantly refers to ratio of typicals and non-typicals. What is your ratio?
In the...
I didn't see it in here, if it's in here.
It was in the questions that came in, and I, you know...
Yeah, what is the ratio?
In the magnet programs, which is the New Lab and Hamilton Avenue, that ratio will be 11 typically developing students and four students with disabilities. In the other schools, it's 10 typically developing and five kids with disabilities. And the rationale for that was that both Hamilton Avenue and New Lebanon have students with more risk factors coming into the classroom. So we adjusted the ratio.
Okay, so that ratio that you've referred to is, you've referred to it numerous times as relating to IDA, that ratio must come from a federal standard or a state of Connecticut special education standard from the Department of Education. Where do you get that ratio standard?
Generally, it's considered best practice. It's not written anywhere that I know of. That you don't exceed a two-to-one ratio of kids with disabilities.
So it's not, let's just, let's just deal with best practice. You just made a reference to best practice.
And that's what it's been, it was that ratio when I got here.
I'm just asking. If it is best practice, in education, that means it's a best practice from a peer-reviewed study. Do we have a peer-reviewed study that selects that ratio?
We can look and see if there is one. I don't know that there is. I will look for that, Peter, and see if we see anything.
Okay, the second, the second part of the same, on the same thread is, you reference gender balance in here a lot. Is gender balance, where would I, where is that standard coming from? Is that an IDEA legal requirement?
No.
It's just something we've decided to do in Greenwich?
Has to do with developmental, you want to speak to it all? Developmentally, kids are different, different ages. So we try to make sure that the class is not all three-year-old boys, because...
Sure, of course, I can understand the desirability of that, right?
So we try to mix it in terms of balancing the gender of kids, and we balance the age of kids, and then we keep the ratio at the 10 to five.
Okay. What is your gender balance? Is there something in the lottery where you cut off? So do you say, if it's more than 40% of one gender, I'm sorry, less than 40% of one gender, I won't take a student? What is the standard? What is the gender standard that you use in the lottery?
We don't have, we don't, we try not to keep a gender standard. We don't try not to keep it, you know, a strict line, but we try not to have an entire class of boys or an entire class of girls. We try to, try to keep the class nicely balanced.
Okay, because it's just, it's referenced, it's referenced everywhere.
We look at boys and girls in the class, we look at three-year-olds and four-year-olds in the class. How many three-year-olds do we have coming in? How many four-year-olds do we have remaining in the class from the year before? So that we don't have, so we have a nice level of models in the class for language and play, as we do with the three-year-olds coming in, who will be coming in, in the, in this, sorry, in the fall. So we have equalized classes. You don't want to have all three-year-olds and all four, or all four-year-olds or all girls and all boys, just like you do in an elementary class. So very much like you do in elementary class balance, you know, you wouldn't walk into an elementary classroom and see an entire classroom of girls or an entire classroom of boys, or all the children being of one, you know, characteristic. You know, we do the same thing in preschool. So we look at the number of three-year-olds we have in the class, the number of four-year-olds we have in the class, the number of girls and boys, and we just try to keep it as even as possible.
Peter, maybe we can leave that to her and come back. Ms. Emile.
So I just want to say thank you very much for answering so many of the questions. I would like to support Dr. Francis in asking for SMART goals for the program for the coming year, so that we have, and not just meeting state standards, but maybe exceeding those and being very specific about what is the goals of, what are the goals of the program. The thing that I don't, not sure, how do you go about budgeting for the unknown? So you had an open extra section. Do you budget that in your budget? Is that budgeted someplace else? How do we anticipate those expenses?
Well, we know, we know the returning three-year-olds, so we start with that number. We work with our partner in the Birth to Three program to see what they can tell us. Again, they don't have to tell us anything until 90 days before the child turns three, and only with parent permission. But we have a good enough relationship that I think they will give us a heads-up on how many birth-to-three kids we can expect over the course of the year. As you recall, we start to serve them the day they turn three. So we also have kids who move into town a lot, and we then have kids who get referred from our community preschools, or actually even from our own preschools, who we discover have some sort of developmental issues, and then flip from a typical slot to a kid with a disability. We generally have been starting the year with 11 to 12 classes based on what we know. Amy is really good about working with us, and we work with Ralph and Lori about saying, uh-oh, you know, we're a little nervous now, we've got a whole bunch of three-year-olds we weren't expecting. And then we work with, with Bob and Lori on how we fund those additional classes. Like, for example, we were not expecting to have to go to a 14th class this year, which will open on March 1st.
That's my question, how do we fund that? And maybe you're not the person to answer that question, but I think it's an important question. How do we fund for those things that come up during the year?
I think we look for efficiencies. Sometimes you'll have lever placements that don't get filled, that we can take some of those salaries back and use, unused days when we don't get subs. So there's money that accrues in that account. I think we look for any efficiency we can.
It doesn't sound very efficient.
Well, the opposite, the other thing we can do, which we've talked about and decided against it at this point, but we may want to look at it for 2021, is to go ahead and put in 14 classes and run them with low enrollment, expecting kids to come in. That would be another way of doing it, but then you're starting your budget with three or four more classes than right now, we technically know that we have students for.
That would be an expensive solution, but I think we need to think about how we go about funding that.
Dr. Francis.
So I had a related question to, I had a related question that I think I was trying to get at in the questions I sent in, but it goes to that, which is not necessarily to start with 14 classes, but to budget. I mean, when you look at our financial report, right, we have three new teachers and 7.2 new assistants, and that's sort of completely out of the expected budget. That's considered a variance. But if you look back, you know, we've had 15, I think, to 20 kids added through the school year fairly typically. So it seems to me, you could say, okay, our best estimate is we need to start with 12, and we think that in three months, we're going to need to go to 13, and then there's a chance we're going to need to go to 14 at some point, and to budget, I mean, I assume we can budget teachers for part of the year. Right, I mean, it seems to me we ought to be able to at least put some of those things into our budget so that we're not dealing with a variance. It just seems like something we should be predicting to some extent. Not necessarily the luxurious end, but it seems like it should be happening in our budget.
So I'll say the same. I mean, it's, we're sort of damned if we do, damned if we don't. We don't want to run classes with, you know, too small in the hopes that students show up, and if we budget and don't use it, we're questioned as to why we asked for the money in the first place, right? It's a can't win. But I am a big fan of this program. Both my kids went through this program. I am glad that you were ready, willing, and able to start tracking the success of the students, and that we know that the IEP students are succeeding, having completed our program. That said, I'd like to see more, right? And if it means budgeting for 14 sections with two or, with three of them stagger open during the year, I'm fine with that. But I don't want to see us run short and then scramble to take money because we've got a budget transfer tonight, coming out of the superintendent's budget. That's not what we should be doing. If we know we're going to need more money to open classrooms, let's be ready to do that. I don't want to play games with it.
Well, I certainly think as we go into the budget process for 2021, there are some different ways we can look at how we construct the preschools, and I, Amy and I would be, both be willing to sit down and look at some different options we can, we can do.
Mr. Sherrit.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Jennifer.
When I was more involved in the preschool effort and the school readiness team, we had a lot of professional development that was shared among community preschools and the Greenwich Public Schools. Is that effort continuing to raise quality across all our schools that feed into the system so that when they arrive in kindergarten, we are ready for them and they're ready for us?
Yes, I'll let Amy talk about most of it, but I do want to give credit, I don't know if the coordinators are still here. Bob Hibison came in and did a school readiness workshop on technology and three-year-olds, which was interesting to say the least. Lori came in and did early literacy, so that she could talk to our community partners about how we approach... about how we approach literacy, what it looks like in our preschools, how you can look at the expectations for kindergarten and move them down into preschool classes and then Amy can talk about.
Hi. We have expanded quite a bit in the last few years. We do think that it's very, very important not only to share all the professional development that we have, but also to expand our family engagement. We have monthly parent chats that go on for our parents in our preschool classrooms and we have invited all of the parents from the community as well and send out those flyers to the community preschools to allow those parents to come in and, and work with us. And we do get quite a few takers on those. We've expanded our family nights. We have four now workshops, mostly around things like what you can do when your child is telling you no all the time, which is the favorite topic for preschoolers, and how do you prepare for that awful time when you're in the grocery store and they're throwing themselves on the floor and things like that, but we do that. But we do professional development in all of the community preschools. The directors meet and they will ask us for things that they like in their preschool. Our evaluation team will go out and work directly in the preschool and provide those professional developments. We also do set a little bit aside to help with professional development in the community itself. And of course, my door is always open if they would like to join us to share in the workshops that we are doing for our PD here in the Greenwich Public Schools.
Thank you.
Mr. Sher and Ms. Neal. I'm going to get back to this financial question because I don't, I think there's another answer here and I'm surprised we haven't seen it, but I need some data just to understand it. Mary, if I'm, if I understand here, there are four sections in Hamilton Avenue right now, right?
Four sections in Hamilton Avenue.
And then there are eight sections in the community program.
Well, we're going to, we're going to try and change our language because we found, we used to call them community preschools and then people get confused about that.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying what's in, that's what you call it in the report.
So we have four at Hamilton Avenue and three at New Lab, which we're calling the magnet classrooms. And then right now, we have six classrooms that are non-magnet classrooms. Two at Old Greenwich, two at North Street, two at Parkway.
Okay, so here, here, so I want to understand that because we used to have, we used to have nothing at New Lebanon.
Correct.
And then we had four at Hamilton Avenue, right? And we had eight in the community program. We didn't even have the New Lebanon program.
Last year, we had.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Three at Old Greenwich, two at Parkway, three at North Street.
That's eight.
Four at Hamilton.
Four at Ham, right. So that's what we've always more or less had, right? They kind of move around a little bit.
They kind of move around a little bit.
But in the community program, there were eight and there were four.
Correct.
Right? Okay. Now, so now.
It will go to six and seven.
Six, so we're reducing the, what we used to call the community program or what is still referred to in this report as the community program. And we use two of those to create classrooms at New Lebanon.
And we added one.
And now you're going to add another one. Okay. So you're going to have three, four, and six.
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
So, and, and those, if you, so if you go on our website, right, and I don't know how this dropped off, for more stuff, this has like dropped off the board agenda, but it used to be that you used to come to us, usually in January or February, because I remember if we delayed, you had problems launching the lottery and you would bring us these rules for review, the lottery rules for review, okay? So my question was, when this New Lebanon Stripe got created and there are now special rules for New Lebanon, right, according to our website, it's right on our website, when did the board review that and approve that?
That was part of the building committee for New Lebanon.
It's in the ed specs for the.
That was in the building, that was in the ed specs for New Lebanon.
No, 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 hold on, hold on, Mary. I'm talking about two different things, okay? We knew we were going to put three classes at New Lebanon. When it was originally presented, it was classes of the community program. Somehow, and this is where I'm trying to understand this, New Lebanon has turned into a specialized program. It's almost a duplicate of Hamilton Avenue, which prioritizes children from a single catchment area. When did that rule get reviewed by the board and approved? I knew the community classrooms were going to go to New Lebanon. I don't remember, I'm dying, I can't find it, anywhere where there was a board discussion on creating a new special rules for people who live in Byram. When did that, when was that approved by the board?
Well, here's what I will tell you. If there's, I will fully own the fact that when we found out that the New Lab ed specs included three full-time preschool classrooms. It was my assumption, and if I was wrong, I apologize, that it would follow the same model as when we put in four full-time classrooms in the magnet school at Hamilton Avenue. It was my assumption that the same process would be followed, that these would be full-time classrooms, integrated like our other classrooms with preference given to neighborhood kids. And if I was incorrect in that, I, I own that one. I just assumed because that's the way we set up Hamilton Avenue, that building those four full-time classrooms into New Lab had us following the same process.
Because the, here's my concern with it and the, you know, Ralph, you and Peter have to work this out because what we've essentially done is shrink the capacity of the community program. That's what we've done. We've essentially said, we've, we've now taken 30 opportunities, because it's 15 kids, 30 opportunities for students from, what we have, how many, we have 11 elementary schools. We used to say, okay, 10 elementary schools, you have a shot at eight, eight classrooms, eight times 15. Now what we've said is, okay, now there's only going to be nine schools, okay? And these two are amongst our smallest schools, right? We've taken those and just said, now we've shrank significantly on a percentage basis the opportunity for the, the community people to compete for those spots. And, you know, maybe the board wants to do that. I don't know, but it's troublesome to me that that's what happened and the board never discussed that or approved that.
Well, it's on the approval point, Peter. I actually went looking for this because you've mentioned it. It's a procedure, not a policy. So it's actually not for us to approve. I think it had been historically presented to us and maybe we approved it, but it's not in our policy. So we're not kind of a back and forth right now. I'm, I'm talking and then I'll give you back the floor, but it's not there. Now, I'm more than happy to add more preschools. I don't think we have any budget for it. But, but it is not a, it is not a policy that it comes to the board. So if we want to make that a policy, we can direct PGC to do that. But that is not a policy.
Peter, I hope, I hope you're not hiding behind that, that this was a major policy decision. By the way, this conversation came up when we built this school and it was a community concern and it was raised and Bill Mcursie made a series of commitments. You can go find him on tape. The only point I'm trying to make is whether it's a policy or what have you, if a superintendent comes in when the board is discussing a topic and makes a series of commitments, right? I think it's reasonable that as a board member, I can speak for the others, we would expect those to be honored. And if they're not going to be honored, then, and this is probably where it gets lost in sauce of the revolving door of superintendents, I understand, nobody kept track of that and somehow this, this happened. So I, I just, I just want to be sure I have my facts set straight.
You do. Again, Peter, I, I take full responsibility for that.
I appreciate that.
But, but in, in reality, we have 70 typical slots.
Yeah.
We had 70 and now we have 60. So there is an impact and yes, Amy confirmed that most of the New Lab kids for next year are New Lab neighborhood kids.
Okay, I would expect they would be. I think we all expected they would be.
When we have the conversation in preparing for the budget and we want to talk about how we're going to craft setting up preschool programs, we can certainly include in that how we run the lottery for kids to get into the classroom.
Well, this, the reason I bring this up is this fits to, and I don't know if you can give us this data, maybe you sent it to us. I see what the program cost is, but the town takes revenue from this program?
Correct.
Have, do you know what the, do you have the revenue? Because I don't, I don't remember seeing it in the budget. Do we have revenues for last year, the year before, and what we expect them to be next year?
We can get that for you.
That would be great. Let me just finish off at the last point because coming to the budget, I looked at this number and it was real, and this all fits to capacity because it makes perfect sense. It looks like on trend, this table, by the way, that shows start of year, January 1st, end of year, was super illuminating. It's amazing what data will do. Thank you for the data. It was really good that you guys provided this. But it looks like you have a consistent trend of a certain number that show up.
It appears that it, we are seeing that trend and it's growing.
Right, so, so my question is, there's another lever here. One of your levers is, is you hold those spots open because you know you're going to get them.
I'm sorry, did you hear that, Laura?
You hold the spots open because you know you're going to get them.
Correct.
Right? So that's a way to not blow the budget, right? Another way to do it is to be flexible on your ratio because we just heard tonight there's no legal or state requirement to the ratio. You could make it, instead of 11 to four, you could make it 11 to five as an example in a large number of classrooms and probably accommodate this. What I'd like to see is, I disagree with Peter. I, I, I would love to spend lots more money on a whole bunch of new things.
Write that down.
Right? Yeah, I mean, everybody at this table would, would gladly take $50 million more and spend it on education. I don't know anybody here who would, who would turn that down.
No, I would turn it down.
Well, I will tell you that.
Wow, okay. But my point being, my point being is, we don't live with that luxury, right? So it's a question of choices. Everything in the budget is choices and trade-offs. And right now, we've got a whole bunch of things that aren't funded that we just cut. So I would think what we have to do with the preschool program is hold the line. I, I, you know, I, I don't know, maybe the board ought to discuss that, but it's 2% of the budget and the question is, do people want to go, ask to go spend 3% of the budget or whatever? But it seems to me, I don't think we should enter this, and I think we have levers, where you guys could administer it in a way where you can take in this excess capacity in the middle of the year and not have the cost to go add a classroom at, if you add the classroom, I look at the teacher, the teacher with student ratio here is really high. So it's expensive compared to other classrooms to add a classroom, like a high school classroom costs a lot less than adding a preschool classroom, a lot less, probably half or 40%. So I, I'd like to see you guys not come to us with budget transfers. I don't want to eat our young by deferring a teacher we need somewhere else that was planned and not hire them. I think I, I think there's more innovative ways to manage this, particularly given the number of classrooms that you're now asking for, which is 14.
Well, I will tell you, we will end this year with higher than the ratio in half the classes at least because we will not open another class after the March class. So we will have classes that will have either five or six children with disabilities in the class. But the good news is that that tends to happen at the end of the year when the kids are more acclimated to preschool and more independent.
Yes, yes.
The other problem is, quite frankly, opening up a class in March, most parents have their kids in preschools by that point. So you're looking for either move-ins or some kids who've turned three. It tends to be a young class and I don't know about you, but being surrounded by 15 three-year-olds scares me. So opening up mid-year is not ideal by any stretch of the imagination. So we try not to do it, but we will end up this year with all of our class, not all, many of our classes being over ratio.
Ms. Neal.
I'd like to go back to the parent workshops and the communication with parents.
Yes.
I would, I would like to know if the communications with parents, the flyers that go home and so on, are in Spanish?
Absolutely.
And do you offer workshops in Spanish at a convenient time for working parents?
Yes, we do. We have, always have translators available and the evening work, we have evening workshops, six or seven o'clock in the evening.
Where do you usually hold your meetings?
We try to do them where there's a bus route available, so we do a Hamilton Ave. School is usually something that works well.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anybody else on this? Mr. Mayo.
Okay.
Yeah, one of the things that get lost in this discussion and I think needs to be stated is that our preschool, number one, is a model program. People come to look at our preschool and I understand the confusion about money and, because I've been confused about budgeting for this all along. So I get that, but it's a model program and Amy and Mary, she could congratulate for their work in this program. It's also a gap closing strategy, a major gap closing strategy. And so this is something that we should be supporting and celebrating.
And the credit really does go to Amy and the preschool staff.
All right, if that's it on this item, we will move on to the next, which is the food services pilot program to Ms. Rayman.
Okay, so first I wanted to thank everybody that sent in the emails over the past several days and Peter Bernstein. You get the award for acknowledging, I think, every single one of them. I think they were in the.
There's a couple that came in. All right, I'll get to you.
It was, it was definitely a long, short week this week. So you have before you a discussion about food services. The first page includes a little bit of a timeline. Thank you, John Blankley, who mentioned being on the committee in 2015, and some of the findings of the committee at that time and how things have evolved, at least as it's been on our agenda items and at least as a committee's been formed. And I think it was either in the November or December meeting, the board talked about going back into committee and putting together an RFP to outsource food services. And when the committee met, we thought of two approaches. One is the templated RFP that is provided by the USDA. And then we talked at length about innovative opportunities and solutions, taking into consideration all of the surveys that were conducted, the comments, looking at the data, understanding that participation is down. And when I went and looked at the 2015 report, you kind of saw what that 15, 16 year looked like. And if you compare it to 18, 19, we're serving less meals per day and we have more students in the school system. So something, you know, is needing to be looked at in terms of increasing participation. And I applaud all the efforts that have been done and certainly the staff that's here and is passionate about feeding quality food to our students. I think we all kind of understand that we have an opportunity to improve and maybe there's differences in opinions on how to go about solving it. We were thinking that if we brought in something innovative to pilot, we can learn from it. So the thought was, get something in, understand what types of foods, what are some of the price points. Certainly to accommodate the free and reduced lunch students is a factor. So how, how do we do that, you know, across the district? The high school, the free and reduced lunch kids are paid for by the PNL or AKA subsidized by paying, by non-free and reduced lunch revenues. And looking at the data, this is something we talked. And looking at the data, this is something we talked, Ralph and Lori and I talked about. There's now eligible at the high school, it's like five hundred plus free and reduced lunch kids that are eligible, but we're not serving five hundred meals. So what's the delta there in this eligible student population, you know, what's happening? And I know Ralph mentioned that the principals are going to start looking into the delta between how much is being served and how many kids are eligible to be eating lunch at a free or reduced price. So this is step one in a discussion. I've talked to a lot of the board members offline. There was questions about staffing. So depending on what we pilot with, does staff go to another location? Does the staff stay there and serve, you know, different food? We talked about, is there a breakfast program, no fuss lunch, if that was something that we decide to move forward with? They do serve breakfast. There was also another company that is out of Connecticut that we looked at. And they are not necessarily like a no fuss lunch, but they come in and they're more of a consultant where they can teach existing food services departments things about, you know, how, how do you plate food? How do you order food that would be more appealing, more nutritious? Definitely accommodate all of our students with allergies, et cetera. So there were other options that we were thinking about, and if the board would want the committee to go back and search additional solutions, we could go ahead and do it. But we felt comfortable as a committee that no fuss lunch would be something that we'd want to pilot. We talked about where we would pilot, and that's why we included the PNL for all the schools and the percentage of the free and reduced lunch kids and where it might make sense financially. And once we were on board with this and once we picked a vendor to pilot something such as no fuss lunch, then we would have to do the due diligence financially to make sure that we were cost neutral. And if we weren't cost neutral, would that be something that as a board, we'd be willing to consider? Certainly considering, you know, we changed school start time and that cost us more money and it was done for the health of our students. I think we heard from enough parents and do not put this in the paper, Joe, please. My son will never speak to me again. I have a twenty-five-year-old son who had his gallbladder removed from something that's typically an older overweight woman. So whoever said, whoever came up and said, you know, kids younger are getting diseases above other people, I can attest. So I think that's enough of an intro and maybe just to get a sense of, from the board, what additional questions you might have? What do we need to do as the food services committee to satisfy the questions? What, what are you looking for to ultimately make a decision? Because this is a first read.
Sure, thank you. John, I don't know if you want to come up and, and talk. I know this was written by some of the members of the committee. It wasn't, as I understand, voted on by the committee. And I just want to give our food services folks time to respond to that before we get into our discussion.
Thank you. I did have a chance to review the report, and I've been working with the food service committee and a lot of members are here. I want to thank everyone for coming too. I want to thank my staff for coming in and speaking on behalf of our program. And I appreciate all the parents, concerned parents who came in and expressed their wants, their desires and some of their concerns about our current, current program. You know, I started to, to think about some of the comments that were being made today and overlooking this program. And I've been, you know, we've been challenged, there's no doubt about it, in this program over the last few years and decade, for that matter. Financial constraints, BET, things of that sort. But we have, we have begun to address some of their concerns. I think I sat at the November meeting and I talked about the survey data. We talked about some of the things we were trying to do and, and this is not a, a problem or a solution that we can fix overnight. We are, we have obviously, you know, bid specs that we went out last year and we need to commit to those. But at the same time, we're also trying to make changes that we can. So let me talk a little bit about, about what we've been doing over the last, you know, at least beginning of the school and then, and then really turning on the, turning on some new things over the last three months. So I want to say, just read quickly, beginning of the school year and increasingly over the last three months, Food Service has been working on its K-8 program to improve the overall quality of its offerings. And we looked at our menus, our food items, our ingredients and our service of operation and have begun to make some changes that are highlighted in that survey data. Our menus, first of all, one of the changes we sought here was to reduce our offerings on a daily basis. At the K-5 level, one of the issues was it took time to prepare and serve three daily hot choices. And we decided to make a change and offer two daily choices, thus allowing the staff to concentrate on quality production and service. And in addition to those hot entrees, we do have several cold entrees that we offer on a daily basis. String cheese with a bagel, Stony Field organic yogurt, sun butter sandwiches. Mentioned was the fruit and granola yogurt parfaits. We also have tahini-free hummus available on a daily basis. So another big change that we implemented, another big change we implemented was to offer fresh fruits and vegetables with your meal. As you know, in 2012, the implementation of mandatory fruits and vegetables was introduced by the Hungry and Healthy Free Kids Act. And it created a lot of post-consumer food waste from the disposal of unwanted vegetables. We have been offering a variety of unlimited fresh fruits and vegetables over the last three months, starting in January. And the students have been taking what they want and eating what they take. They are, they like the opportunity to try the variety and they go with what they like. And this in combination with our partnership with Yukon's Put Local on their tray, we've been able to introduce some seasonal vegetables and fruits and help the students expand their, their variety of fruit and vegetable tasting. And at the middle school, been working under the same guidelines, concentrating on higher quality production of fewer hot items while still offering a daily variety of sandwiches, salads and cold items similar to the cold, the K-5 menu and also including unlimited fresh fruits and vegetables. Our food items, one of the takeaways from the survey data was to increase the quality, reduce artificial ingredients and preservatives and offer more fruits, fresh fruits and vegetables and of course, make it all more appealing. And our team has begun to work on all these fronts. Food labels, our approach here has been to review our current specifications and work with our purveyors to sample, approve and replace current products with higher quality, minimally processed, clean labeled alternatives. And this process will continue out through the remainder of the school year and set the precedent for our new bid specifications. We are currently using chickens raised with antibiotic-free and containing no artificial ingredients. We use a hundred percent ground beef in our hamburgers and in our homemade meat sauces and our homemade meatballs. Our taco meat is one hundred percent ground beef and lean ground turkey. And we've begun the conversion of our yogurt products to an organic brand. We also, also, all the eggs that we're using are fresh and locally sourced. Fruits and vegetables are locally sourced, one available, of course, in this climate, and are delivered daily. And other locally sourced products include milk and our bread products. In terms of our ingredients, over the last few years, we have been adding more scratch products to our menu. We begin, we begin that process with fresh wholesome ingredients when we develop a recipe. And the satellite production area at the Greenwich High School is responsible for preparing these entrees to ensure consistency across the district. The high-volume area has a cook, chill and storage system that allows us to prepare the freshest products, distribute them to the schools using our refrigerated trucks, and our trucks deliver fresh products to all the schools on a daily basis. In terms of our service operation, making the food more appealing is one of our goals. We've been working with the cafeteria managers on the service lines to enhance display and merchandising. Fresh fruits and vegetables have been prominently placed and to encourage consumption. And we've also been using a best demonstrated photographs on our new menu format to highlight some of the monthly entrees. The Greenwich Public Schools, grade K-8 participation in the National School Lunch Program. And we're currently, current with a meal benefit eligibility of about twenty percent. Many of these children rely on the program for one or two meals a day and it generates close to about eight hundred thousand dollars annually in state reimbursements. And this allows us to feed that population, but also keep our prices relatively low for all the families in Greenwich. And as we transition through this process, we hope that, that the community will support us, look at our new menus with their children and try a day or two. And working with two culinary CIA chefs that are currently on our staff, our mission is to provide our staff with the tools and training they need to offer wholesome food made with quality ingredients and presented in an appealing manner. And that's, that's where we are right now. In terms of no fuss lunch or the pilot program, I'd be happy to answer questions that you may have or however you want to work with that.
Thanks so much, John. I just have a more general, just want to open the discussion, Lauren, as you put it out there. Thank you, first of all, for all this work and thank you for the history because I didn't appreciate how long it's been going on. First of all, I mean, three kids eat every day. Since I'll be here until midnight tonight, for sure, they'll all be buying lunch tomorrow. So I definitely do it as a matter of convenience. And I think that many of us do. We should, we're always looking to improve everything we do, right? Academics, food, later star time, anything we do, we should always be looking to improve. But I want to take a step back and sort of look at this with sort of two ideas in mind. One, I know you've analyzed it before, but I guess I haven't. The first thing being, do you outsource or do you not outsource? And to me, that is mostly a quantitative analysis and I'd want to see that ahead of time. You always do that in any outsourcing decision. But of course, it's also qualitative in this case. And then, secondly, if we do choose to outsource, I know personally, I can't do it by just looking at one vendor. I would need to see multiple questions, I'm sorry, multiple vendors. But most importantly, I mean, I don't think anyone has a monopoly on healthy food. So whether that be in-house or, you know, or outsourced, I think we should look at all options before we make such a big decision. Thank you.
Mr. Sharon, then come back here. Hundred percent. I'm in the exact same place you are. I don't know, no. Sorry you feel that way. I, I appreciate all the work that this committee's been doing, but I have process input, Lauren, I'd want to give you because I'm a little worried about the, I knew what the path was, and by the way, thank you for the front of the report, trying to build the bridge back to what the board originally authorized. Because there seem to have been some twists and turns in here that I don't, I certainly don't remember being told that explicitly. So that little history you put in the front was hugely helpful. But John, there's two, there's two pieces of history, though, that I need a refresher on. And if you don't know the answer to it now, I'd love to get that information. This discussion of better, more healthy food offerings, particularly in elementary schools, is as old as the hills. Right? It, it comes up and the funny part is, is that there's like a batch of parents that bring it up, my wife included. That's why she makes lunch. She, my kids don't buy. Okay? And then those parents like moved on to the high school and then a new batch showed up. And this, this, I've been around long enough that I've seen this movie a couple of times and I never understand why we're never able to solve it once and for all. If I recall, there was a healthy food pilot done. I don't know the date, but I know Lisa Beth Savitz was the PTAC president at the time that it happened. So whenever that was, it was probably two, I called her today because she's like fully out of the school system and she didn't call back and she probably was smart not to call back. But that ran and it ran in a couple of elementary schools. I know it ran where my kids went, at North Mayanis.
What elementary?
Healthy Hawks.
Okay, and what was it called?
Healthy Hawks.
Healthy Hawks, wow, even that branding name, hit that cool. So we did that and can you remind me what happened in that pilot? Because if I recall, you know, we worked really closely with the PTAC Health and Wellness. We came up with a menu. The menu was what everybody wanted. They implemented it and I don't remember what happened. Can you remind us what happened when we did that?
Yeah, the program was a 2013 school year.
Geez.
We ran that program from
I'm really old.
February through June of the, through June, the end of that year. The concept was to create a menu from scratch and serve that to the children with no processed foods at all.
Not dissimilar to this?
Not dissimilar to this.
Okay.
The menu itself was developed by myself and my K-8 manager. We used a couple of recipes from the, a recipe book that USDA children had submitted as, as creative ideas and recipes. And then, and then we had a lot of groundswell from the parent group at, at North Mayanis in terms of supporting that, in terms of advertising it, in terms of talking to their other parents at the school to try and promote that. The program started out very well. I think participation went up about ten percent overall during the course of February to June. And the problem with the, not that there was a problem with it, but one of the things that came out of the pilot was the increase in labor that we needed to produce that menu. And that, that, that was the crux of that, that venue was the, was the labor. Not only did we increase labor from the two staff members that were there, and we chose that school specifically for those two staff members, they were very strong. But our K-8 manager was a resident of that school for many of those days in that last five months of school year, making sure that they, we could put it all together and, and, and serve it on a daily basis. In terms of student reception to it, some of the menu items went really well. Other ones, they just were like, we are not interested in porcupine burgers, which were turkey burgers with little pieces of green in there. I think spinach was it. But we were able to, to take away some of the products from that in terms of homemade meatballs. I think we had a veggie wrap. We had a Hawaiian wrap in there also that we introduced to the rest of the school district. And we had those things on the menu for many years until they just fell asunder and as like anything, our menu changes and we start to introduce new products and stuff. So, so the bottom line was success, additional labor to create. And the revenue generated was not enough to really support the increase in labor, even though we increased participation by ten percent. And I believe that was about fourteen or fifteen extra meals a day.
So did they, did you guys discontinue it or what was the?
So the takeaways were, some of the items that we could produce as homemade items, we introduced and we still have on our menu today, our K-5 menu. Some of the things that we couldn't continue to do, like hand-dipped French toast sticks, hand-bread chicken strips and those things, we had to, we had to stop. Those were very labor-intensive for us and hence, we, we could not bring those out to the mainstream.
So did it wind up, but did it wind up being revenue and cost neutral?
It wound up being, no, the cost actually exceeded, it wasn't neutral. So, so what you're asking is, was the performance as good as it was prior to that? No, the food cost actually went up a little, you know, slight ticks and points and stuff. And the labor to generate that food cost or the food was, was much more higher than we, not expected, but.
Okay, and then the second history question, just so we can get level set, was I could never keep this thing straight. When Michelle Obama was talking about this issue and we wound up embracing, I forget even what that was called. Michelle Obama's program, it was a great thing.
Healthy, Hungry Free Kids Act?
Yeah, but then it, then we got into this big back and forth over
Smart snacks?
Should we be in it or should we not be in it because of how much we're getting back and the impact, the restrictions, the restrictions on it? My, my question was, I, I, I forget how that thing played out in, in, in the financial impact. Can you just refresh us on what happened when, because we tried it, right?
Well
We did it and then we said, whoa, this is killing us. Stop doing that.
No, what happened was, the Healthy, Hungry Free Kids Act start was born in 2010 and started in the 2011, twelve school year. So that was Michelle Obama's introduction to school lunch. That was a part of, it came in three, three phases. The first one was, we're going to phase in better, better variety of fruits and vegetables. We're going to make it, make it at the menu, you have to take a fruit or a vegetable for it to be a reimbursable meal. it to be a reimbursable meal. We offer, we do offer versus serve at our school, and you used to be able to take three out of five items for a complete meal, and one of them did not have to be a fruit or a vegetable. So part of this program made that mandatory, and that's why I put that. So Phase 1 was mandatory fruits and vegetables. It also took all the processed grains or white flour products that you want to talk about? And the first phase was to make 50% of those grains whole grain, rich. Whole grain rich means it has to be the first ingredient in there, you can't, you have to start with whole wheat flour, and then you could have enriched flour as a second ingredient. But it had to have 51% whole grain flour to be spec, to be used in the program.
And what was Part 2?
That was, that, so that was Part, so Part 3 was, grains moved to 100%, where we couldn't offer any white flour or a processed flour in anything. So when you look at like a chicken tender, it's covered with whole grain breadcrumbs and things of that sort. The last and final step, that came in the 2014, '15 school year, and that was the introduction of Smart Snacks. Up until then, Healthy, Hungry, Free Kids Act only affected the reimbursable meal program. And with the introduction of Smart Snacks, they went after everything that is sold in the school system, including snacks, including a la carte extras and things like that. They put calorie restrictions on the amount of, so you couldn't have anything over 350 calories, including a deli sandwich or something to that effect. And that was what we presented to the board in 14, '15, and that was their vote unanimously to take the high school off the program, because it would have turned it into a glorified middle school. And since it was a 96% a la carte program, generating $1.4 million a year,
Right.
We thought it was important to continue down that path, having history of when we had to remove certain beverages in the school in those 607, there were riots in the
So, John, don't you just speed this up? So we participated in that program, but it wound up, which is great.
We still participate.
But it, yeah, in the high school, and it, but it, at the high school, we got out because it was turning, it was really negatively impacting our finances, right?
It would have, yeah, because the high school primarily is based on an a la carte
But we do do it K-8?
We do it K-8 schools.
So we follow those standards, K-8?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you for the history.
Coming down here, we'll go to Ms. Olson, then to Chris.
First of all, thank you for spearheading this and looking into this, and I think I'm also of the mindset that we are always looking to improve our schools. That's why we're here, because we care a great deal about everything from mind and body to all of it. I also, I, I'm also of the mindset that we, it's important to look at more than one, to pilot more than one vendor, otherwise it's pretty much a fait accompli, and I think we, it's important to do it that way, which is, I think, generally how you would pilot something. My question, I know we're not quite there yet, but my question would be, I guess to Mr. Mayo, or, I don't know, but where, what school, elementary school we would be looking at? I read up on the, on the 501(c)(3), and I know that we can apply for grants, but I also know that can be an onerous process, and to work out the kinks, I think it'd be important, if we were to pilot, we pilot in one of the Title I schools where there, we do have a majority, we do have more free and reduced lunch. I think that that would, to see if it's a sustainable, workable program for our schools, I think that that would be, that would be really important.
Ms. Sten.
Couple questions from Ms. Raven. Really interested in the free and reduced lunch part of the problem. I know it's accomplished with no fuss lunch through self-funding plus the 501(c)(3) grants. Information I would need before the next meeting is, how many districts are using this way of funding the free and reduced lunch kids? What is their total fundraising goal as a 501(c)(3)? And I'd like some confidence that there's history behind it, that other districts have found this workable through a combination of self-funding of the district plus the grants, and whether those districts have comparable free and reduced lunch percentages to Greenwich. And the last point is, I want to echo one of the comments from the community speakers, that we should definitely implement the eco-friendly serving where, there's no reason not to start that from scratch, doing it the right way.
We could do that now.
I'm very, very excited about the opportunity to look at a pilot, and so far, I am very, very optimistic. With a little more data, we can get comfortable.
Dr. Francis.
I think a bunch of stuff's been covered, but, you know, the free and reduced lunch, I think one of the questions I had sent in was, you know, I know there's, there's been talk of, you know, parents being willing to pay more, but, you know, I don't have a great sense of who the population was that answered, and, you know, how exactly that free and reduced lunch gets covered. You know, I am concerned that some of our families that may not be free and reduced lunch, but may be still lower socioeconomic, are not going to really want to be paying that extra $3 or $4 for lunch, so how do we manage that? And then how do we make sure that we have the funds to be able to cover for the free and reduced lunch? And it sounds like, you know, the issue is, and I've only heard this number, I didn't know it myself, but if we're getting $780,000 from the federal government, it's, you know, we're, we're going to lose that money. So it's sort of making sure that there's some
Why are we going to lose that money?
Well, I think if we leave the program, if we're not in the program, then we don't get the funding anymore, which is what we've done at the high school, but
Can't we, can't we be in the program and have the outsourcer fulfill the requirements of the program?
My impression was that somehow this would not fit the program in some way.
Do you know the answer to that question?
But that's a good question. I mean, can we still be in the program and outsource?
Yeah.
To the fuss lunch? Well, we were originally thinking of outsourcing like everything, so still being in the program and going to like, you know, Flick or Chartwell's, or, you know, one of these other type, you know, putting out an RFP and they would respond to it.
Yeah.
But it would be the same sort of model that we have today. If we had the, so everyone's talking about the cost of food. No one wants to serve unhealthy food, but are we buying and purveying, I don't know, is that the term? Are we sourcing the right, you know, food? There's a cost associated with that. So when we started to think about the RFP, and if we put in, we want it to be organic, we want it to be, you know, no other things that are in the foods today, we could put out an RFP like that and still be on the national school lunch program. It's just going to cost us, you know, a lot more money to do that. Okay, so I guess just to clarify, with the options that we're considering in terms of piloting, whether that would allow us to stay in the federal program or not, so I think that would be a very important piece to know. I think getting a better sense of the cost per purchase, and what that might mean to families in terms of increased costs to them, and how that might impact different subdivisions or, I don't know the right term, but different groups of families. And this is a silly question, but it came up when we were talking about this. Students can choose and say, you know, I want to get lunch Monday, Wednesday, Friday, but not Tuesday, Thursday, right? So there's not a commitment that you have to be all in or all out, and kind of how do you manage that? And then I think the other big piece I'd want to know is, are there schools, are there administrators who want to do this? Right? Because this is not something that I really want to force on somebody at this point. I would really like it to be somebody who's enthusiastic about it in terms of schools.
I think, I think one of the principles is here that's enthusiastic about it.
All right, Ms. O'Neil.
So, so as I understand it, we'd like to, there's a request to sort of do a pilot with no fuss lunch, but then I'm wondering that after that, we decide that we're going to outsource whatever, can we then do an RFP and have them included? Because then it wouldn't be a level playing field. So it's sort of a legal question, you might have to ask someone, can you pilot with the company and then have them, then respond to an RFP?
Maybe Lori or John has the more accurate answer, but Eugene Watts has been attending our meetings, and there's like a single-source vendor RFP, and then there's the sort of multi-vendor, and there didn't seem to be a conflict. We discussed piloting with, you know, one vendor, and if we went to the completely outsourcing, but Lori or John or Ralph, if I heard it incorrectly.
Yeah, well, it's something that we should really nail down, be really sure about, so we don't want to then, you know.
I said I heard right, so it's both right.
So then the other thing that maybe the committee ought to consider is the fact that the high school is now using Uber Eats and Hulu and all that sort of stuff, you know, the impact on our revenue, but I'm more concerned really about security, so I don't know if that comes under your domain of school lunch, but you might want to give it some thought and then maybe come back with the recommendations.
Yeah, that's a good question, and we have talked about that, and there is, and I know I've mentioned it a couple of times, one of our committee members would love us to not have an open campus at the high school. But yeah, you know, what, we're competing with Uber Eats and Grubhub and et cetera, and, and even, you know, Peter, you and I spoke, even at elementary school and middle school, parents are driving not a bagged lunch or a sandwich, but like, you know, Chipotle to their kids.
Yes. Yes, sir. We're just about
So first, I want to thank everybody that's worked on the issues. This committee is like morphed from what it was and zig-ding zag, and I think we should probably look at that issue separately at some point. I want to acknowledge, though, all the gains that have been made. When we started this journey, when I started on the board, I think we were getting $640,000 from the town to fill the gap, and we're now in the $200,000 range, but the food quality at the same time has gone up. So we're moving, but we have to acknowledge that we also need massive movement, right? And I know that there's enthusiasm from people in the building's ready, willing, and able to do it. And I also know when we give students choices, they're going to buy cookies, they're going to buy ice cream, and they're going to buy chips. Guess what? That's what I ate for high school. That's what I ate for lunch. And these kids have the ability to come in with money, or they have money on their account, and they're allowed to buy those items. So some of this, folks, isn't just on the school, some of this is on us as parents. I know my kids do it, they eat the ice cream, they eat the cookies. Tom, stop selling ice cream and cookies. Okay, so, but this is a start of a discussion. It's actually a restart, right? We've been having this discussion in some form or manner for quite a while. The difference, though, I hope that people are noticing, is we're not letting go of it, right? We talked about this in November, we've asked the committee to go out and do some work, we've asked for them to come back. This is one proposal. This, as Lauren said, isn't the only thing you've done. I actually like the sound of the consultant, right? To go along with the work that we're already doing internally. What can we do? As Kathleen said, nobody's got a monopoly on this, right? It's not one company out there doing this in the country. We, as a school district, can go and look at what other districts are doing. So we really should do that. And of course, food services, I've said this at the last meeting, I'm going to keep saying it, this isn't supposed to be a revenue generator. This shouldn't just be about money. If this decision is only about money, we may as well just give up and pack up and go and not be serving lunches. I'm guessing not many districts are breaking even on this, and I don't think that's what our marching orders are. This is about serving students. I do remember the Hanover Report, so Kathleen, you asked about, you know, whether there's a savings from outsourcing. We looked at this a couple of years ago, we paid somebody to go do this for us, and what they came back and said is, no, there's really no great savings from outsourcing. You still own the equipment, you still own the issues, you've got to pay a vendor, there's variability as well. I don't know why, you know, we haven't gotten to that point. People want an RFP, we can do an RFP. I do not believe it is a good thing to do sole source vending for any public contract. We are the keepers of the public funds, we have to use them wisely. If we're going to even explore this, we need to do it with a complete RFP. And if we're going to do a pilot, I don't like the idea of piloting one vendor, that doesn't tell me anything. I would, two or three, or piloting against internal changes. So we at different schools are trying different things, maybe we use the vendor. I don't know, but I don't think we can go, I don't think we can go as slow as we've been going, and I also don't think we could just say, this is the company, and we're going that way either. So we can make changes, right? And that includes the better trades, I'm on board with that. And we can do all of that without the outsourcing, right? You guys are ready? I say we get started. Peter, I actually written down North Myannis trial, I thought that was a really good thing. I knew some of those things had kept going, but I didn't know it had completely died. There are better things that kids want. Now, nuggets aren't going away, not in any size, shape, or form, but we can serve better nuggets, right? When I buy my kids nuggets, they're typically like white breast meat nuggets. They don't always love that, they've now acquired a taste for it. We can do the same in school, the same with pizza. These things are not going to go away, we just need to serve better things. We can buy Bell and Evans, you used to just be able to get them at Whole Foods, you can now get them elsewhere. Sooner or later, Costco's going to have them, okay? So we ought to be able to buy that. And if parents are truly willing to pay more money for better food, then let's serve them better food. We are not using that data point to say those parents are willing to subsidize other students. That is not what that question was about, and it's kind of offensive that we believe that that's what that is. Look, I don't know a whole lot about no fuss lunch, but I do know it's very clear they're not in Connecticut yet. I've got people that work on my team from New Jersey, which is where they're located. I don't know when they're thinking of bringing this food over. These people leave their house every day at the same time, they arrive at a different time every day. I could chart it, it would look like this. So I have a lot of concerns about that. I too share the concerns about free and reduced lunch. We've just had a change in the law that automatically puts people into the free and reduced lunch program. Why? Because it removes the stigma for people having to apply for free and reduced lunch. We're not going to outsource that to a private company who's going to make them apply for benefits, and they're doing it through a 501(c)(3) that may or may not be wholly funded. I'm really kind of worried about that. I have a lot of questions about this vendor in particular, and outsourcing in general. So I don't think we're there yet, but I think the idea and the concept is right. We've got to do more, we've got to do better. You know, John, I've challenged you before, I'm not going to stop doing it. Better food for kids, right? And I know we're stuck in the contract we're stuck in, and I'm glad to hear you say we're working on changing it on the fly, but my golly, when you do the bidding for the next contract, I don't want to hear that we're getting bad chicken nuggets and bad pizza. I don't like hearing that we've run out of things, it just, it's bothersome. So we can do this on our own, we have a team ready, let's figure out how to do it.
Mr. Scher.
Lauren, this is the feedback I would, I would give. I think what you guys are doing is great. I do think the RFP process is not, this wouldn't be how I would do it. I think the first thing you have to, we have to do is, we have to figure out what our requirements are. And in this case, number one requirement, right, is a menu, or some set of nutritional standards, and they need to be specific enough. They can't be vague enough, which is what you would get from the USDA, right? They need to be specific to Greenwich. Now, whether that means, hey, bid on exactly this menu, I don't know. But the first thing that has to happen is, we, before we start talking to vendors, we have to know what our requirements are. And I, that's why I'm not a fan of this, I'd love to do a pilot, but I don't like the way this one kind of played out, right? And I think, I wouldn't quite have done it this way. I think if we can figure out what our requirements are, and if it needs to get tested, like, you know, we've already got a bunch of people who can test that for us, to get a, whatever it is, it's going to be a requirement, then I would hope we would put that requirement out in an RFP to people. And maybe, if you only get one vendor and it's no fuss lunch, I have no idea. But we need to run a competitive bidding process. I don't want to serve on a board where our business practices are not always competitive bidding everything. I don't know how everybody else feels about that, I don't know if we have a policy. Gaetan, if we don't have a policy, we need to have a policy, that everything in this district gets bid. And it isn't, well, I think it is a law, but I worry about, I don't even want to get into what I thought I heard you say Eugene said, but that raises a whole other question, Ralph, subject for another day. But the point of it is, I would love to see this translate into a set of requirements. I would love to see those requirements developed and with the, all the health and wellness people who feel strongly about this issue. That's point one. Point two is, on any business case that were to come out, I mean, it read the business case, thank you for trying to do a pro forma P and L, as a finance person?
Oh, no. It was just, it was concepts.
I got it, I got it. So, but let me give you the feedback that I would want to see. If you ever look at a business proposal, doesn't matter what's on the spreadsheet, you know what always matters? Is the assumptions that are in the footnotes.
Garbage and garbage out.
Right? So as an example, I believe, based upon everything I've heard, and I'd love you guys to answer this question, I believe there's actually three or four strata of customers. I believe there's actually three or four strata of customers. There's one who are customers who are at certain schools, who are a specific economic status, and they will gladly pay eight and nine dollars a day for their kid to have a particular type of lunch. This was proven out, by the way, at a company in Connecticut who did this exact thing at Old Greenwich Riverside and one other school. They delivered a lunch that cost, it was totally healthy, it was totally organic. It was way more than what the non-fuss lunch is. It was, and they did it for 850. And what they did is they delivered it to people's homes because they couldn't get the school to agree to let them put it on a cart in the lunchroom at Riverside School. Anyway, so there is definitely a group of people who will buy that and pay for that, right? Then there's a group of people who would not pay at that level, but want something more healthy. And then there's probably some others who don't care, right? And then you have a bunch of people who are never going to buy because they're just saying, I'm doing it at home, and that's what I'm doing. So I think when you come back with the business case, you have to show the assumption on the revenue side that says, because I don't like this, this assumption, it's squishy. It says, oh, it's three dollars, and we know they buy chips. So therefore, that tells us people will readily pay six bucks every day. There probably are some people like that, but that's squishy. So when you come back with the business case, I think we need to recognize that there's some assumptions on what the revenue model would be. And then the last part, I guess, was a point I was going to make with John. I don't, John, no offense to your staff. Your staff is great. I know they work hard. They see a gazillion kids every day. They know them by name in a lot of cases. They know who's eating what, but they could actually tell us who eats what. Who takes what, who eats what, you know? There's a lot of knowledge there. But at the same time, I think we, we're not good at looking outside in all cases. I would tell you, I would bet you dollars to donuts where's that gentleman from Greenwich Hospital probably went home. I'll bet you Greenwich Hospital would gladly work with the committee and John on coming up with the best, a great nutritional menu that meets all the standards that parents want, that could help support working with your folks from Culinary Institute of America and your background, John, and your staff. I think there's other people who we could probably engage, who are in the community already, who could help get to that menu that becomes essentially the requirement. So I like what you're doing. Keep doing it. But at the same time, I'm a little bit, those would be the three things that I would want to see before you came back and we were making a decision on a pilot, for me.
Lauren, just a question. You mentioned talking about a consultant. Were there other ideas that the committee has looked at that you could share with us, even if they're kind of just out there?
Yeah, the two, the two were, the consultants called Brigade. And they're like former, you know, chefs, restaurateurs, and they're actually in a school, I think it's New London, so they're in Connecticut now. And then no fuss lunch. And we really focused on what do we put in the RFP? And that's where we got, and I agree with you, Peter. We got stuck on like how, how, what do we put in here in terms of the foods that we want to see purchased? And we wanted to start to learn more about, you know, what was possible before we documented something. But I agree, we could probably do a little bit more due diligence. And with the help of the Wellness Committee, we have our new, I see our new coordinator, you know, maybe putting some input into that as well and define what the quality of food would be.
What the menu would be.
Yes, yeah, the menu. Sorry.
Hang on, I think Kathleen and then.
I was just going to say, Lauren, while you're doing this, I didn't, maybe I should ask John. So you're in a contract where you have certain ingredients or that you can only buy through what?
End of the school year.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we rebid every year.
Oh, fine. Okay. So when you're building this financial model, which I assume you're going to, could you sort of show us the delta on what we come up with as the sort of pro forma of the high quality food we'd like? What the delta would that be? Because maybe that's not 350, it's seven dollars. Maybe it's 350 to five dollars. And maybe people are willing to subsidize that, or the school board is willing to subsidize that. Then we can have that conversation, but that's important. And also just, I've gotten some emails about lines, which I know we haven't talked about tonight, but in general, if we're talking about food services, I know people would like to have the lines be a little, move a little more quickly, especially when I know at the middle school, they only have 20 minutes for lunch. So things like that would be.
Yeah, and they complain about that at the high school too. And, you know, I think, John, you had it somewhere, like on any given day, we're missing like four people. So there's, you know, there's the opportunity and staff. And a lot of, you know, what you talked about at North Myanis and then, you know, what happened at Coscoop School, they got rid of the styrofoam, but then their staff to have to wash the trays and the special dishwasher or whatever. Yeah, like everything we tried, it always comes kind of back to staff. So we have to recognize and figure out how do we mitigate that? Because we can't keep starting, stopping, starting, stopping, and have the same reason for the stopping.
Dr. Francis.
So I think another point that should be made is, you know, we can have Greenwich Hospital come in here and tell us.
Or somebody.
No, no, I'm just saying, this is a general, you know, and tell us exactly what the healthiest food is, and we can do all these things. I think most of us probably have a pretty good sense of what that is. But I know, at least for me and my home, I would love to have my son eat kale every night and have everything be whole wheat and have absolutely no saturated fats and no cookies and no chocolate after eight o'clock at night. But I have to compromise because the reality is I want my child not to hate me and to actually eat the food that he's getting.
The kitty cats need to eat the cat food.
And, you know, I do think we also need to be a little bit aware of what I might consider yummy. My kids might not consider yummy. And the reality of what are these kids going to actually eat? And so, you know, we, I don't know exactly. This is, this is not quite the budget and the really precise kind of questioning that we've been asking, but I do think we need to face that reality as well. And that, you know, some of the impacts of these decisions were, you know, even if I'm standing over my child, I can't always make him eat what I want him to eat. But when they're at school, there's a whole lot less power over your kids and what they're choosing to eat or not eat. So I think we have to accept the reality of what are these kids going to actually eat when their parents aren't standing over their shoulders.
All right, anybody else? All right, well, thank you. I think you've given some feedback, and we look forward to continuing talking about this.
Thank you.
And John, better nuggets.
Thank you.
All right, next up is the strategic plan. This is the major checkpoint. Mr. Mayo.
Thank you, Peter. I just want to say to John before he sits down that I really enjoyed the pilot over in North Myanis, and especially the French, it was really great. No, it really was.
He liked the French toast.
I'm actually hungry now.
Sorry. We're already, it's, we're already running at 10 o'clock, so we're going to be here for a while. Mr. Mayo.
Okay, first of all, before I get into the strategic plan update, I want to thank the program coordinators for being here tonight. And they'll be available to answer questions about our progress on our strategic plan as well. We have three principals over there. Are they still there? Tommy, awake over there? Okay. So we have three principals over here that will also be able to answer questions about how the strategic plan is being implemented in their, in their buildings. So I just wanted to give them a shout out. So we're currently in year four of the five-year plan. The anchoring strategy of the strategic plan is to develop students as active participants in online learning, Making Learning Personal. In the last four-plus years, we've laid the foundation for Making Learning Personal and have made significant progress in changing teacher practice and improved student outcomes. And those include the following. We've fully implemented a one-to-one digital resource program. We fully implement an instructional and data management system. Virtually all teachers are utilizing a blended learning approach. The district developed personalized learning playbook for its teachers. And it's being implemented with structured support and a way-based approach. A hundred percent of the schools have incorporated a minimum of one personalized learning element as a strategy to support their academic, personal, and interpersonal goals, which are part of their strategic plans. Their, I mean, their school improvement plans, sorry. A model personalized professional learning plan was developed and implemented for the staff this year. New teacher evaluation and professional learning, TEPL indicators were developed, and they've been implemented. And we'll be bringing those new indicators to you in 1920 for approval. Changed the secondary school start times and dismissal times by an hour and adjusted the schedule by using the opportunity block. We've also, our social, emotional learning program has been implemented across every school and every level. And the first set of family and community engagement face standards were developed and implemented with a hundred percent of the schools setting annual face goals as part of their SIP. And based on our achievement, we, our achievement has increased at, at the SATs that the kids are taking, at the high school, the school day SATs. Our achievement has also increased on both, in both the language arts and math SBAs, especially for high-need students. And our students are growing based on the EQUIS growth model. So we think that the strategic plan has done a great deal to improve the outcomes of this district, and we want to continue that. And we're now setting the stage to review that plan and progress to date and the efficacy of our strategies so that we can plan the next iteration of the strategic plan. That process and project plan will be developed in collaboration with the incoming superintendent and the board so we can launch a review of what we have and develop the new or next strategic plan. The program inventory outcome project information, along with achievement and survey data collected in 1920 and various systems reviews, will be used to inform the next plan. So that's my introduction to the strategic plan. If the board has questions, please.
Ms. Taylor.
Should I address the questions to you, Ralph?
Whatever you were thinking, I know, but go there.
So I want to zone in on the strategic metrics, which is page 13. The chart of the main dashboard, this one. Okay, Dr. Tanebala, you're up. You are the designated question answer. There are two strategic metrics that I'm concerned about as targets. I'm going to tell you which row. So the third row, the third one over, community service. My read of this is that our goal is.
Forty percent.
Forty percent, and we're at 38 percent.
Correct.
I'd like to see us have a more aspirational goal. I came out of a meeting with the director of the Boys and Girls Club today, and their leadership club has 100 hours per year. And we're asking for 10. I know kids have after-school jobs. They have heavy sports commitments. They have advanced-level courses. I think, given how close we are to the target, we could consider stretching that target a bit. And then on the fourth row, the second item over, family and community engagement. This has me most concerned. I think we've set a very low target, and I would love an explanation of how you arrived at that one.
I can address that one. This, this data point was developed when the strategic plan was first developed. It was based on a set of questions from the Panorama survey that, that included questions like, it was about the frequency of involvement or conversation with, from, you know, in parents in the schools. And one of the questions that I think is kind of the most extreme example of why this is sort of a problematic indicator is that, and this has been reported in our communications updates in this last strategic plan as well, the last strategic plan update as well. But one of the questions is the frequency of in-person meetings with your child's teacher. And the favorable responses, if you understand the general way that Panorama survey is reported out, the favorable responses are weekly. And if you think about that, that's kind of impossible to have a teacher weekly meeting with every parent. Certainly at the high school, they have 120 parents, right? So, so we're never going to have a high number there. And that's one question of the question sets, but it follows sort of that same logic. From a, from a percentile, national percentile benchmark basis, that's the 60th percentile, 26 percent. So we're right up there, above average, in terms of the way most districts are responding to, to that particular question set. So what we said here is, that was the question set that was established. That was the indicator that was established without having gone yet through a change the indicators conversation. We established a target that we felt was achievable on this next set of Panorama administration. But that we would be developing and looking at other indicators that we felt were better indicators of true family engagement. And then trying to, you know, recommend that that would be the new indicator for the degree, how well we're doing in that area.
When you say you would look at better indicators, do you mean you would look at better?
Questions or sets that really reflected.
Better instruments.
Not necessarily better instruments. We have, we have a plan to use the Panorama survey, but with Panorama, they have question sets that, you know, that you can benchmark against national, you know, data that, you know, from other Panorama districts. But you can also add other questions that you develop yourself. You don't have the benchmark data, but you can develop them yourself. And we can look at other surveys or other areas to ask questions about that better get at true engagement.
I think that is absolutely critical. And if I had to choose what's the most important square on this entire metric, that would be my number one. So I'd love to see work continue in that area. Thank you.
That's the focus. Absolutely.
Ms. Raben and then Ms. Wilson.
Is this the first time we're seeing targets and numbers, I think, right? So thank you, Ralph. I know I've been, I feel like it.
You saw this, you saw this a couple of months ago.
Okay, thank you, Jen Lau, wherever you are. Anything that concerns you, like one that stuck, I feel like, also, I got so loud. Fifty-eight percent staff school climate, and maybe that's along the same lines of the family engagement. And the goal, 80 percent, and we're at 58. So that jumped out at me, but I don't know if there's any that are of concern from your perspective.
Lauren, that's exactly what we're doing. We are revisiting those survey sets to see if the questions that we are asking are giving us that information. The data that we gathered with that particular survey is that it aggregates the data, but it came by school. So that's, the schools looked at it, and there were two schools in particular, two or three schools that were very low, and that pulled the percentile down. But the national percentile, we were still on the average with the national percentile. But it definitely has to improve. But we are looking at different data, different question sets.
Well, it's helpful that you were able to target some schools that may need more improvement than others, so that in and of itself is helpful.
Also, hang on, I want to get Mr. Sheriff to point out.
Yeah, what I was just going to, oh, now it does. Okay, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I had to go back and figure out when we did this. We did this in our April 21st meeting of 2017. We approved in that meeting 15 tiles. Five academic, five interpersonal, and five systems operations, okay? operations, okay? I think what we need to get, and a lot of those at one point couldn't have targets outside of the academic because they, you guys hadn't figured out how to measure them yet. In a lot of cases, to Lauren's point, the good news is that some of them are now measured, which is terrific, but I think we've got to go back to what we approved in year two of the strategic plan and we've just got to be sure we've got them lined up. Right here, I'm counting 10 or 11 of them, which is good news. We should probably go back and, 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 and look at those and just confirm. And then we'll go to Megan and I want to ask questions about these targets and how we get them, but just as a point of information, we had 15, we've had them for years and we've never changed them. We've just never fully reported on them.
Ms. Wilson.
So, I remember seeing this as a red flag earlier and I hope I'm, maybe I'm not getting it quickly, but the classroom teacher attendance, it says that 14.6 days, that's significantly higher than the state average, right, for classroom teacher attendance? I know that there's times I've been surprised just having a teacher gone Friday after Friday after Friday that I started to wonder if something was, was wrong. I've seen it because I've, you know, a couple of kids in the elementary school and I'm just curious, how do we come to that and what do we do about it, I guess?
Bob, you want to, you say that one?
I'm not sure you want me to answer it.
Yeah, I do.
Megan, could you re, just say that again?
Classroom teacher attendance is really high and I don't normally tell anecdotal stories, but I do at one point remember a teacher being absent a Friday after a Friday after a Friday and I, I said, I wonder if perhaps there's, there's actually something really wrong because this teacher's been absent so many Fridays and I would never, I, I couldn't get away with that nor would I want to where I've, where I've worked as a public school teacher for 17 years in different districts. It's very high to keep missing days. And I, I saw this before as a red flag. If a teacher's content in their job, then I, I think that they don't normally take that many days. So I'm curious where we got that number and why that's happening and maybe this isn't the, this isn't the time to ask, how do we fix it? But that's, that's an alarming number to me.
So, I'm not sure where the 14.6.
I'm not sure where the 14.6 came from. That's a number Jen Lau pulled from some data point that, yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't match what I see for data. It doesn't match what I see for data in, in the HR department on a, on a daily basis. We do have attendance concerns with staff. We identify those on a regular basis. Whether it's dying or what. We communicate that with principals on a regular basis to have discussions with both teachers and paraprofessionals.
So, in terms of seeing any trends, we communicate those with the principals on a regular basis. We, we take a look at long weekends and we take a look at staff that are taking time off before or after long weekends or holiday breaks. We make comparisons to the previous years to see if that's a trend or the, or staff member, we communicate that to the principal supervisor and have those discussions with that person that you're seeing something you need to pay a better attention to.
You know, to your, to your patterns, principals discipline at the school level, I discipline at the discretion of the superintendent with, with staff that have, you know, more difficult issues at, at our level. Again, I'm not sure where the 14.6 came from because if you look back at the strategic school profiles, the district data doesn't show numbers that high in any of the previous years. So I, I don't know if they incorporated certain days that shouldn't have been incorporated into the data. I, I, I don't know, but we'll relook that.
It comes from the ED 165 report and I'll have Jen check those numbers and we can get back to you, okay?
Sure, Ms. Dayton.
I'd like to go to the walkthrough blocks that are gray. One of them's called partners in learning and I've checked my assumptions there. Because it's called partners in learning, my interpretation is this is what we expect of teachers when we walk through the classroom. We are not evaluating the students and the teachers, but this is mainly are the teachers creating an environment in which the students set goals.
Yes, so we had identified three critical elements to make learning personal and that was done with Dr. Jill Gilde and a bunch of research. So we had landed on partners in learning, student ownership, student self-regulation and the value add as you see here, which is not a critical element, but it's how do we reimagine the, the spaces in the classroom? So yes, these are the conditions that the teachers are putting in place in order to be a partner in learning with their students individually, right? Yes. So we are looking for evidence on these indicators. These are the identified look for's that we have said that we value and we're going in systematically as a team to look for evidence.
So since that's the case, I am alarmed by evidence of data being used to support learning. When the walkthrough is done, and I know it's just one walkthrough, 25% seems low.
Sure, so we have identified that as well as an area of focus with the principals with the wave two, wave three going forward. So the way to read this is that the percentage of observations as we're going through, so of the observations is 345 total and with the observers, it's a team of two, three or four, it hasn't been more than four. So what we're looking for, and again, it's a 10-minute timeframe, it's a, it's a snapshot interval of time, there's no judgment, you want to go in, find the evidence and then kind of get out. And so we go to, we systematically go through a series of classrooms and it is the wave two participants because they're the ones that are committed to making learning personal in this manner and using the, the plays that we have outlined. So in these moments of observation, we're not seeing that there's evidence that data has been used to inform that learner experience in that moment. So yes, you are right, we are concerned about it. We do have conversations with the team that have walked through and let's debrief, this is a question of practice. So at the same time, we're celebrating our quick wins because there's a lot of quick wins in the moment, but also what is the question of practice? So going back and now working with your PLC, your school data team or your grade level team to say, what data are you using to inform that entry point of learning for the students? And then what are we going to do to act on that? What strategies will we implement next? And then through an interval of time and let's collect more data, come back to it and analyze it again and are we seeing growth?
I totally understand what you've just described.
Good.
Because there's a flaw in that it's hit or miss based on that short interval of 10 minutes, what's going on in the classroom, what part of the lesson plan, what part of the unit you're in. I totally understand what you're saying. So would it be possible instead to get a better sense of the use of data by checking the backend of our ECRIS system to see how often the teachers are going in to look at the student data?
I would have to confirm with Jen and looking at the system because I'm not sure the hits, the number of hits and clicks within the system and if that helps inform us. And again, ECRIS gives us information based on the benchmark testing. It's not formative data, so we're really trying to get at the formative data. And I, I don't want you to think it's a flaw, that this walkthrough was developed anchored in research of Robert Marzano and TeachScape because this is different from the informals that principals will do as part of the TEPL evaluation. So there's another layer of walkthroughs going on. This is to ensure that these practices and these, the critical elements, that the criteria are actually being implemented. So this is a question of practice, certainly, and you know, what are we going to do about it? And we do, and we have identified, how do we incorporate more learning intentions or the objectives and learning targets and articulating that to students in the learning experience?
All right, Mr. Share.
You don't need to touch it.
Okay. Sorry, I wanted to go ahead and do it.
You're good.
Okay. I guess when we get to agenda planning, it could, see, I don't know how to think about this, is, I, when we get to agenda planning, I think Jennifer Dayton brought up at our last retreat that we needed to talk about these targets and data with the existing plan. I think we have to have a conversation about these targets and these plans. The second thing is though, a lot of this is integrated into, I mean, you used to come to us and give us these long presentations about the integrated assessment model and how that was feeding into being an early warning system for kids, trying to figure out specifically what we needed to work on to improve performance. We as a board approved, approved tremendous IT investments and assess, assessment investments so that we could get underneath and we could make learning truly personalized and we could zero in and then we could, that was our lever to improve performance. Or if you go back in the strategic plan, there were essentially four areas and then there were very clearly in our plan, the tasks we were going to do to improve achievement. I think we need to have, I hope we'll have a separate session so that we can talk about how all this is integrated because the good news is, is our performance is high as a district.
That doesn't happen by chance.
Okay. The bad news is from my perspective, is that we're in the same place or maybe a little bit lower on these measurements than where we were in 2016, okay?
I'm not following.
Well, I'll give you an example, okay? Our, our academic performance on math, let's just take the top five because this is the ones that, I don't care about all of them, but let's just take the academic ones. Math, we were in the 90th percentile, English, we were in the 90th percentile, science, we were in the 69th percentile. Percentage of exams of K-12 students who met their growth expectations, we were at 84% and we were at 79% in the AP target. So those were our top five and that's where we were at that time. If I look at this now, the good news is, is we're kind of in the same place, so nothing really went down. But at the same time, we didn't, except for AP, we didn't go up either. So I think we all know that education is a super complicated thing. You're dealing with small humans and if you've ever had them in your household, that's always a challenge. But I think we've got to go back and look at, what we're doing is definitely good, but it hasn't moved the needle. So particularly, I would hope we would have that conversation because as a guy who does strategic planning for, or has done strategic planning for a living, it's great that we're now talking about having to go back and revisit the strategic plan and start that process now so that at the end of this plan cycle, we'll have a new one. But it seems to me, you break that down into two parts, or you definitely break it down into two parts. One is you have to, as a board with the top leadership, we have to decide what the strategic goals are going to be and, and we have those and that's great. A lot of places don't have those, we have them, that's great news. We had a set of strategies with a set of tactics underneath them like, you know, get data systems, get star in place, those are all tactical things that had to happen and they all happened. But a good strategic plan, you're going to sit back and say, okay, now I have the arc of time, I have four years of data, I can kind of see where I am. We've got to get to a place now, we've got to drill down and say, wow, that, that thing didn't move the needle as much as I thought it might because there's an element of guesswork in this. And it's probably healthy to have a conversation to say, okay, what have these things really worked and what new strategies are we going to need to tee up if we really want to actually move the needle? And the good news is, and granted, we're not alone, this is a problem all school districts everywhere have, but I, I think we have to get ourselves level set on the data first and get back to that connection. Like you said something in the last meeting, I'll leave it on this point, it made, I, I went home and I couldn't sleep that night because it was such a brain teaser because it's just not possible. You said in the ECRIS growth model, every student can make their growth target. Well, that's not statistically possible. So it, it just, it's not, it's statistics 101, it's not possible. So, but, so it tells me, we should get landed on targets, we should get landed on this and as a prelude and connecting those dots as a baseline to then move forward. The good news is you guys got a lot done. Thank you very much for getting all this stuff done, but eventually we have to have a sobering conversation about how much impact is everything we're doing actually having.
So that's, that's the work that we're going to be planning for next year with the new superintendent so that we can look at the strategic plan and look at all our, our metrics and our measurements. And also what we're going to do is we're going to check back with Jen Lau who helps us with these metrics, with the, with the dashboard and taking those measurements out to compare them to 2016 so we can get that back to you. Because I think that she reported them a little bit different.
I don't think you need to do the compare in because...
The reporting is a little different.
This, well, not on these targets it's not, these were the ones that were given to us and Jen was involved in them when they were done. So what we, what you definitely don't want to do in a strategic plan is go in, once you have a set of targets, and constantly change how you measure it.
Correct.
Because guess what, then you lose everything. So what I'd rather have her do is start with what it is we have and not try to argue the data.
Correct. And that's, I just want to make sure that she's reported it out the same way from 2016 to here. That's all.
Dr. Francis.
So I would reiterate, I think that, I feel like we've had a bit of moving target with a lot of these things. In fact, you know, the, if you look back at just in September, the family engagement, the measurement was to be determined, the goal was to be determined.
Yeah, those ones are different.
You know, so, so I, I don't believe I ever knew how it was we were planning to do it and so to say that, you know, that this is what we'd always decided and it certainly could be that I've forgotten, but sort of trying to look at this bigger picture, I kind of feel like there's two issues. One is, I think that as, with board involvement, I think we need to make sure we feel like as we move forward, the targets that we're picking are definitely the ones that we want. I feel like we had gone through that and I feel like it's changed. I understand that there can be some difficulty in finding ways to measure the targets so that we sort of sometimes mush the targets to make them things that we can measure, but I think we need to be really careful about that. I think there needs to be a whole lot more clarity as to how these goals were reached. I went back and I was trying to listen to some of our tape from September because we were having a lot of discussion in September about, well, how do we measure these goals? And okay, let's, let's, these targets, you know, let's decide tonight, you know, what the targets are going to be. And we were having a conversation about trying to decide the targets that night. And then the thought was, well, but we really need to have national standards and other districts can compare and other information to decide on these targets. And so I have to say was, it was nice to see that there were targets, but I felt like there was absolutely no explanation as to how we got there. I mean, this whole, the, the, this, our dashboard, which to me should be the center of what we're talking about, is like an appendix in page eight of this report. So I mean, I feel like we've really moved away from, these are our goals, you know, being very clear about how we're measuring them, really understanding these targets. And then the sub-indicators, it's nice to have them, but I don't even feel like we've really gotten a connection between how are these sub-indicators really feeding into our primary tiles? I mean, to me, these should be clear expectations between how that connects and how that leads us and gives us a clue as to where we're going in terms, in terms of our primary tiles. So, you know, I, I'm not sure what we do right now except for the fact that I feel like we're talking a whole lot about waves of personalized learning, which I think is important, but I have, don't think I saw anywhere in there, how are we actually planning on improving fitness? You know, what are, what are, what are, what are we doing specifically for these different tiles where we're not meeting the goals beyond sort of, of, of trying to work on this overall personalized learning? So I feel like we need to have some real consideration about how we do this moving forward and I, and I feel like this is going to be really key for us to learn all of these lessons well as we go into our next phase. And I hesitate to say that because I don't feel like we should be giving up on the one that we've got yet. that we've got yet. So that was a lot of talking with, I'm not sure exactly where I was going, except I think to say, I would really like to understand how we're determining these things. So how are we determining family engagement? What is the problem with that? And I did get an email, I think at 5:30 tonight, answering some of these questions, but I think this needs to be really more broadly understood. How are we measuring it? What's the problem with it? How are we going to finalize what we want to do? And I think the board should be involved in making those determinations because I think this is important. I think we really need to have very good understanding of what national, you know, other school district, other kinds of standards are that we're using to create our goals. What, you know, with, I think I got an answer for one of these things that starred in terms of, does Connecticut give us, you know, expectations or goals for, you know, all these starred ones that are the, I forget, it's the CTE 165 or whatever it is? You know, what are those things? Because I went online trying to find them and I couldn't find those. So I think there's just a lot of information underneath this that needs to be much more robust for us to really use this as a strong working document that we're using to guide the district. And I just, I feel like it's worth the work to make this one better because then I think we're going to be in a much better place to understand how we make our whole next strategic plan even better. So I don't really want to start phasing into the next one until we've figured out the problems with this one because I think it's a really good learning experience for us to understand how to create a new one in the future that's going to be even better.
Right. And that's why... So that's why we're... All right, I'm not going to, I'm not going to talk.
Just tell us.
I won't touch the button.
I promise, I won't touch the button. So the state only gives us a target for physical education on the NGAI in 165. That's the only thing it gives us a target for. It doesn't give us a target for the other three things that it measured, that it's collecting data on. Our intention is not to get rid of this at all. It's to look at it and is it giving us the information that we want for the strategic plan, for what we believe are the important goals and action steps? So that's what we're doing and looking at this, but we have to think forward as we're making a plan. What are the things that we need to dig down deep in and look at and make sure that we are addressing in our strategic plan? So it's not getting rid of this at all. It's really just getting ready. How do we dig down? What information are we getting? Are we getting the right data? And as you say, how do the sub-tiles relate to the larger tiles in the academics? So those are the things that we're thinking of and as we're moving forward, we think there will be, we think we're going to get a lot of good information, it's going to be a great exercise.
So I'd kind of like to understand how, as a board and administration, we want to do our next step because I feel like when we had this conversation in September and I only listened to a part of that, that video, there was a lot of conversation about, okay, we want to know this information, we want to know that information, and I think there was a lot of nodding, but I feel like we've come back to be here again with a lot of the same questions and with some numbers filled in, but without the information that we had requested in terms of how do we get there. So I feel like, I feel like we need a real...
Session.
Session, I think, on this. I think we really need to get back to making our strategic plan the center of what we work on and I don't know where we put that in, but I think it's really critical.
Ms. Olson, do you want to...
I have two really quick comments that are completely related to one another, but Dr. Francis mentioned the fitness and I saw something and we're talking a lot about wellness and nutrition and fitness and there's things that are out there and ways we can get there. There's this, I think Scotland adopted the daily mile and it was something to improve concentration for, they just had the students get up, go outside and they ran around the track for 15 minutes. It wasn't always a mile, some walks and jogs, some were competitive about it. And they came back and they just focused and they did so much better and they also exceeded their, exceeded their, they were below on their, on their fitness, they weren't reaching their goals and I think, and there's a lot of places that are doing things that are actually, I'm not going to say free of cost because that's 15 minutes in the school day, I understand that, but there are innovative ways to reach these goals. And if we just see the goals, I understand that's where we are right now, but there are ways to get there that are, that are almost free and genius in terms of mind and body and health and academic performance and, and health benefits and all of that. Secondly, again, not, not related, I'm trying to be quick because I know we're going on tonight, it's a long one, but I just appreciate the fact that, I think when you said the walk-ins or the, we call them mini pop-ins or spot check inventories, I appreciate the fact that the administration has limited the number of administrators that walk into a classroom because it's very, it can be very disruptive. It's important to do those mini pop-ins, I believe for sure, to get, not always announced in advance, to know what's going on and be able to see, you know, to be able to evaluate teachers. But I also just appreciate the fact that it's been limited to three or four, I think you said, not seven or eight generally because that can be very disruptive for the educator and also for the students. So I appreciate that.
They are excited to be a part of it. Because they want to celebrate what they've been doing and they want feedback too.
Right.
That's what we've... It's reculturing how we work together and do this work together as a team. So they're actually very excited for us to come in and they want me to give specific feedback, but that's for the principal to do. But I do give them feedback as to what our quick wins are as an aggregate, so they get a percentage of data and then questions of practice. So again, it's about reculturing. I did want to share with you one strategy that we've been doing and this is a credit to Jeremy Boland as our physical education coordinator. This was a concern for him and for myself and we had a conversation. So what he's been doing, what he's found out, is that the assessment we administer, where this is reported on, so we've, our hypothesis is that we have a calibration challenge and calibration from one educator to the other and how we administer the assessment. And so we want, that's what we've been doing all this year, professional learning, to calibrate the... But every teacher, every physical education teacher is administering the assessment the same way so that we're, the data is useful. So we think that's one area of focus for us and so that the reporting of that data is more accurate and that we can use it. So we think that that will make a significant difference because we're doing the assessment in May. Yes. So the next physical education assessment, state assessment is in May and will be reported so we'll see that next year, unfortunately.
Ms. Neal.
So there seems to be a fair amount of frustration with the strategic plan and our discussions and I think it's very difficult for us to have these discussions and reach any conclusions. So my suggestion is that we set up a committee with a very specific goal and a timeline in relation to the strategic plan, whether it's focusing on just the academic indicators or just one or two of the academic indicators. But I think if we had something structured that then did come back to the board where we could actually then have a more informed discussion, that some of the questions that were raised tonight could be answered and then, then sent to, given to the board and the board can then have a, have a better discussion than what we're having. We keep rehashing the same frustrations.
Any take on that?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry. Didn't want us talking.
Ms. Dayton, so you're interested in the committee there. Is there interest in any committee?
Well...
Mr. Chair.
We used to have...
Yeah, you could do it.
I got you. I just lowered it.
Okay. Just tell me, did I push the button?
Nope.
No. Okay, don't push the button. Yeah, I, I, I agree, it makes sense to get the committee to work on this strategic plan stuff. We used to have it, we got rid of it, we should probably get it back. The thing I would say though first is, I think it's worthy of the board, in addition to doing that, what we should do first is we should have a board level set about the measurements we already have in place, get everybody on the same page, talk about how it connects to what can be measured, not measured, connect it to the assessment system and the rest of it and get everybody level set on that and have a discussion about that. I think we need to start with the what is first and then a committee could then build on that work, whatever comes out of that, to say, okay, now what are we going to do about it if we're going to change anything? And, you know, look, I'll gladly serve on a committee on this topic. I did this before, if you need to volunteer. But I think the first thing is, we should have a session to get the board level set and then we can commission a, a, a committee. Because right now, what I'm realizing out of this is there's a bunch, some of us have lost the plot just because time went by and then we've got at least two people who don't even know this plot. So, you know, and different people have different levels of interest in this play in the first place. So I think we should get a level set and then do a committee. Dr. Francis.
Do we think any of our Lighthouse stuff is going to touch over into this?
No. I don't think so. I mean, I, so I'm looking at the calendar, I'll bring this up during agenda planning, but I think March 14th looks like the next day for Lighthouse. So I just, looking at the calendar, I don't know when we would schedule a standalone session for...
Or make it as an item in the agenda.
I mean, we could definitely do that. Maybe do it in one of the...
Start earlier.
Right. We could do a Lighthouse for two hours and then an hour on...
That's good.
Okay. So if you want a committee though, I would like to do that tonight if we could because it takes a majority vote of the board to establish an ad hoc committee. We would establish a three-person committee and then I will send an email out and seek interest and we'll figure out who ought to be on it. Is that where you all want to go?
That's fine.
So, all right. I will make a motion that we create a ad hoc strategic plan committee for the purpose of, which purpose, Mr. Chair?
Just do yourself a favor, just take the original remit for the SPLC, whatever that was. And, 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 by the way, you'll have to, you'll have to trust that what we came up with in the first place was the thing we needed and just duplicate that.
So let me withdraw that. My motion is that we establish an ad hoc committee of the board for the purpose of reviewing the strategic plan.
Perfect. Second.
All right. Any discussion on that? All those in favor? Oh, Dr. Francis.
Are we sure three is the number we want?
Well, if you have, well, we're going to have to post it anyway, but I don't think we really want a more than, more than four. I mean, other members are free to go, the meetings are going to be posted and committees are advisory to the board. So anything the committee does is coming back to us. All right. Any other discussion? All right. All those in favor of the motion to establish a ad hoc committee on strategic plan passes eight zero. Thank you very much. So any other discussion on this item? Great. All right. We will figure out who's on the committee. All right. Next item on the agenda is the first read of some of the new policies. Dr. Francis.
I think the new policy stuff is basically the 1,000 series. I think we did not feel like there was anything too controversial and we didn't hear anything back. I'm just pulling it up now, so if you have any questions, please ask.
Any discussion? I think these are great. I love the community relations aspect of it. Some of this was in the old policies and some of this looks completely new to me, so I'm happy to see it. Anything else on this? All right. If not, we will move on to the whole student development program report. Ms. Ford.
Mary, you want to come up to the podium where the mic works?
It does work, you just don't hit the button.
User error. Yeah? Users.
You have the report and the questions that were received. I think there's one question I did not have the answer to by the time I could get these posted. So we're looking at whole student development in two different ways, one of which is increasing the positive behaviors that we see and hopefully decreasing the negative behaviors that kids experience. We have now, this is our, this kind of dovetails into the strategic plan because a lot of the activities are part of our strategic plan in the area of social emotional learning. We now have the second step program in all elementary and middle schools. We are not at full implementation yet, but we're working with the principals to make sure that all the teachers are equipped and deliver those lessons. We've had a bit of a stumbling block with the high school program. Our goal was to use the second step secondary high school program and they assured us that it would be coming out. We're in year two, it's still not out yet. The Safe School Climate Committee has decided that we will contact them again sometime around April. If the program is not going to be ready for September, we're going to have to pick another program. The downside to that is that it will be inconsistent with the language that they're used to from second step, but at this point, given a number of different factors, we feel we need to move on. In terms of positive behavior PBIS, we're in our last cohort of schools by the end of this year. Every school will have a fully trained team that involves five days of training and then we follow the cohorts through. So again, we're going to have to look at how we support the cohorts and the schools continuing on. We have schools that this is just their first year, so they're going to need some support going forward. The bad news always is the suspension and expulsion data. Unfortunately, we are still disproportionately suspending males, kids of color and kids who get special ed services. Coincidentally to this, we just got a memo from the state ed department today about the state's initiative on disproportionality and suspension and expulsion. So it's not just us, but certainly it's a problem we need to address. We did see an increase last year, the data you're looking at is last year's suspension and expulsion. And unfortunately, it was in the area of substance abuse, which is where it picked up, and that's vaping. So last year, the high school responded pretty immediately with every instance of vaping resulting in a suspension. They found that that was not really stopping the behavior at all, so they've tried some different approaches this year. The number of kids caught vaping is decreased this year. You'll see those statistics in next year's report. The other one we saw a slight uptick was insubordination. And insubordination includes things like continued use of the cell phone when you're told to stop, profanity, skipping detention, talking back to adults, walking out of class.
We lost you, Mary.
There's still...
There you go.
It's lit up.
You're back.
Just don't...
Oh my God.
Is it? No.
Yes, it is.
Okay. So I am...
Aaron's going to blow his brains out.
No.
What about now?
Karen, don't have any insubordination issues.
So that's Ms. Dayton and then we'll come to Dr. Francis.
I have a really hard question for you. Forty-two percent in 2017 of the incidents were special needs kids. How do you determine what is a discipline problem versus what is a manifestation of a special disability? And where's the line? And are the teachers well-trained to distinguish what really is a discipline problem? If you could give me an anecdote maybe to help me to explain what rises to a discipline problem if it's a special needs student?
The discipline, a discipline problem is a discipline problem. So if the student... If the student is in a classroom and the teacher says, "Please take out your book", and they say... And they say, "I'm not taking out my F-ing book", that's a problem whether they've got an IAP or not. How you deal with it is probably more specific to whether it's a PBIS general strategy that we use in dealing with it or whether this is a student with a emotional disability and has a behavior plan and there's a specific way that you're supposed to deal with it. But it's still reported as an incident. Again, whether the student is suspended or not may depend on the student's behavior plan. I think good news, bad news is, when kids are demonstrating what we consider to be an inability to make good decisions as opposed to a choice of not making good decisions, they are referred for special education services. The numbers of kids referred and entered under the emotional disability label is highest at the high school level. So it is a judgment call on some cases, but again, the behavior is the behavior and it needs to be dealt with on some level.
All right. Dr. Francis.
So first thing I wanted to say is, I found this report really easy to read and I just want to thank you. I felt like it was organized nicely, it was bulleted well, I wasn't searching for information, I wasn't trying to add things on myself or whatever. I found it very easy to read. One of the things I would ask or say is, it was great having goals, there weren't really measurable aspects to it and that was one thing where I found when like I went down into mindfulness part or into other places, I... like I went down into mindfulness part or into other places, I felt like there's stuff there that's ripe for making goals. I think it's shown some great progress. I would love to see if we have any measurable benefits to some of the other interventions that we've talked about, you know, whether it's, you know, can we measure in some way impact of the training that we give for the bullying? Or, you know, even if we can't measure the impact, you know, is there some other way that we're measuring how many teachers are doing it? So, I think trying to find some ways to give us some more specific goals would be great. And some way to evaluate the specific programs that we're using. Now, some of it would be nice if we could do it within our schools, but if not, it would be nice as we're being shown these, and this may have come up in other places, but as we're being shown these, to get the reminder, this has been shown in, you know, a national study or in another district or in some other place to have positive benefit to students. And that kind of information might also help us find the goals that we want to use for our own schools. But overall, I did really, I enjoyed the ease of reading this report.
Thank you. Just so you know, there's actually a national movement to try and find better ways of measuring the impact of social emotional learning. CASL, the national organization around social emotional learning, is struggling with the same thing. I mean, you can count bad things that happen, but just because bad things don't happen doesn't mean that good things are happening. And it's that balance that we're looking for.
Ms.... The Mr. Chair.
Actually, you were first, Karen. Were you?
Yeah. I was working my way down the table. Maybe this question for Ralph or Mary. It's great to have data. I love data because it tells you what's going on. I don't think I should be alarmed about these numbers because we have 9,000 kids and we have 180-day school year and this thing says more or less we have like an incident, we have an incident a day or an incident and a half. I guess it would be three incidents every two days. And if you look at what an incident is, is, you know, somebody got smoking in the bathroom is an incident. Now, it's not good that it happens, but I'm sitting here wondering, that just seems like such a low number. So, should I be worried about this? I mean, obviously, I'd love the number to go to zero or I'd love you to make it in half, but I, it seems to me this is like an area where we're doing a pretty darn good job. No?
Don't say that out loud. Don't jinx me, Peter.
I do think we're doing a great job, but I am worried about the vaping.
Yeah, no, you could pick on any one thing, right? And we, as board members, sit for expulsion hearings. We deeply hear the story. It's always hard. I don't know a board member who doesn't like, you know, it's... You feel it. I know, you're a cracker. So, it's, but it's a, it's like you come out of that thing and you're a little bit wrung out emotionally every time you got to do one of those. And, but it, you know, they're really a big deal. We all could probably remember however many of them you've done and you could remember the case and the face of the kid and the face of the parent and you can, we can all visualize it. But at the same time, we're not doing that many of them and that's actually good.
Well, I think the really good news is...
Yeah. I mean, Ralph is pointing out, we've done one this year, so I guess...
But through your process, if you notice in the report, kids aren't missing school.
Yeah.
So, they're going through the process. They understand, I think somewhat, the gravity of what they've done, given they're sitting in a room with board members and attorneys, but at the end of the day, it didn't impact their learning because everybody came back into school. There were no days lost to expulsion. So, whatever it's doing in terms of imparting the gravity of their offense seems to be getting back to other kids because you're not doing that many of them.
Well, actually, Mary, that's the other data point that was in here. We have a high number of days missed, but we all know that a few number of expelled children are generating a very large number of those because they may be out for like 10 days before they come before the board. So, you have one kid who could easily generate 15, 20 days. That's my point. I'm looking at this data, it looks, I mean, look, I always want it to be better, but this is one of those where I don't think there's bad news here. I think there's good news here. Am I wrong?
Well, you're wrong for the kid that gets expelled, but you're right for a system...
Obviously, right? For a system of 9,000 kids, I think our staff is doing a pretty good job is what this tells us.
And as we've talked about in the, about, as I've mentioned and I think we've talked about together in this report for years, it's not just about behavior. I think now that we're seeing more personalized learning, we're seeing kids more engaged in their learning.
Yeah, sure, sure, sure.
I think that's contributing to it. I don't think there's a single reason and I don't think there's a single solution, but what we are doing seems to be moving us in the right direction.
It's hard to prove the negative sometimes. Ms. Dayton.
I was going to actually note how we haven't had, I guess, Ralph, you think we've had one, but the fact that we keep getting our expulsion hearings canceled makes me very happy on many fronts and so I do want to celebrate that for a moment. But of course, I have to ask one question on the data, which is why, I mean, obviously, I recognize there are more grades in elementary school than there are in middle school, but still, I was surprised that elementary, there are as many elementary incidents as there are in middle school. Like, what could kids possibly be doing in K through five to actually have more issues than middle school?
Right. I think we are hyper vigilant, more than we ever have been about kids' behaviors and about lowering the threshold of when we actually intervene and call it a serious offense. So, I think that's true across the grades. You know, again, I've spoken to you in the past about risk assessments. Our risk assessments are very high. Do I think kids are more at risk? I just think we're hyper vigilant about it now, given what's going on in the outside world. So, I think, you know, some of the insubordination, we are seeing some little kids with some pretty out there behaviors for whatever reason. So, yeah, I think it does happen and they're the same kinds of behaviors, but again, when it comes out of the mouth of a seven-year-old versus a 16-year-old, you tend to react a little bit more.
Okay. And then that leaves me the next question. Glenville obviously stood out in a big way. Can you explain specifically what's happening there?
It could be one or two kids.
It was like 15 or something.
You're looking at incidents. Do you look at the same data or you're looking at incidents?
Got it.
Or maybe Mark's the disciplinarian. Who knows?
I don't, yeah.
If you do also look, I think we have more kids, I'd have to look, but I think we have more kids who are multiple offenders. That number seems to be going up, so we have kids with more significant behaviors across fewer kids.
Got it. Thank you.
Anything else on this one? No. Thank you, Mary. I also appreciate the report and the gravity.
Thank you very much.
All right. So, we're onto our action items. The first up is the BOE Greenwich Police Department MOU.
Mary, is wellness considered part of whole child development or no?
The wellness curriculum is part of the health department, so there's a wellness curriculum.
Is it considered part of whole student development? The wellness curriculum that's delivered, wellness delivered at the high school, is it considered part of whole?
No, that's considered part of curriculum.
Fine. Thank you. Yep. Thank you.
Okay. So, with that, we're on to action items. It's the Board of Ed, Greenwich Police Department, MOU for School Resource Officers. Mr. Mayo.
Yes, we worked on the MOU at the Policy Committee and we asked the chief to give us the rubric on how they evaluate police officers and he did, so we attached that to the MOU and here we are.
All right. So, it's an action item. Can we get a motion to put it on the table? And I think the motion is to authorize the board chair to execute this because that's where we have to go. Yep. So, Ms. Dayton, you make the motion? All right. Is there a second? Ms. O'Neill? All right. So, discussion. Ms. O'Neill.
I appreciate that this is an evaluation of a police officer. I would like to see the people in the high school who interact with this officer to look at this evaluation because it looks like, you know, just a pro forma police officer thing, whereas the assignment this officer has is quite different. I would ask that it be run by Rick and whoever else are the people that interact with the officer at the high school and see if they have any input.
I think one of the issues with that, Barbara, after talking with Jim Healy, because I have the same concern, is that they can't evaluate this officer any differently than they can evaluate any other officers. Yes. There you go. I didn't want to say it, but I'd like you to do it.
Thank you.
Dr. Francis.
I actually thought you were heading someplace slightly differently, which is I have, I was talking in caucus and saying, you know, one of the things that I had thought with evaluation was evaluating the program, but I don't think that needs to be part of the MOU. I think that's something that we as, as an administration or board or somebody kind of want to evaluate the program and in some ways, I think that reflects a little bit on how we think they're doing and that's, I think, the way we might be able to do that.
Other discussion on this item? All right. So, the motion on the table is to authorize the board chair to execute the agreement. So, all those in favor? All right. Passes eight zero unanimously. Thank you very much and we'll get a clean copy signed and we'll get Chief Healy to do the same. Thank you. All right. Next up is policy 9311. This is like the fourth read. Francis.
So, I think in this list, we have the 4112, which we had agreed to already, but this is just making it official. We have the 7100 that had that one phrase removed and then the 5,000 policies. And I'm sorry, I'm actually trying to pull that one up because Ralph, I had, we had talked about trying to get regulations for that, that one particular policy with the exclusionary seclusion. I forget what it's called now. Yeah, the seclusion, because there's a lot of questions about when is that used? How is that used? What are the steps to get there? So, I'm not sure. We, as a board discussion, to come back to it as a, as a committee, had felt that, you know, a lot of the questions and issues that had come up from parents and from the public were quite valid, but we felt that those were issues that really would be better addressed in a regulation as opposed to actually putting all those details in the policy. And so, I don't know if the board feels like they want to go ahead and vote with this with the understanding that the regulation is coming or if they want to wait to see the regulation before doing that. And I think that's a board decision. No, but I think, you know, if we felt that the regulation didn't meet what we wanted, then we could make further changes in the policy or I think we could make certain requests of the regulation. So, that was just a question to put out to the board because we did bring that back to discuss it and that was the conclusion we came to.
Mary, we have our regulations in place, correct?
The regulation is in place for seclusion restraint.
Could you share those with the board, please?
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. So, Dr. Francis, I know there are two in here. Do you want to move them separately because I have a different opinion on each one and I know that I want to take them together?
How about you move to move all the ones that you think are fine?
Well, there's only two that are actually attached to this. Seem to be the only two that are ripe for...
Oh, no. All of them are for vote. They, she just doesn't put the...
Gotcha.
She doesn't, she, no, they're listed. There's about five or six listed.
Why don't you make a motion to put them all on and then I'll make it a motion amendment?
So, I move that we accept all of the second read policies.
You got a name of...
You got a name.
That was a nice try.
Would you leave 4112 out?
All right. I move that we accept 5141.213, 5144.1, 5144.5, and 7100.
I'll second that. All right. Any discussion on those motions? On that motion? 4112, we're going to take separate. Yeah, no, we're going to take that separate. So, any discussion on the motion on the table on 5141 and the rest of them? All right. So, all those in favor of accepting those motions? Those policies? All those opposed? All those abstaining? Passes 701. Francis, you want to make the next motion?
I move that we accept policy 4112.
Second from Ms. Stowe. Any discussion on that? I'm voting against that. I believe that we should actually have a role to play in the hiring of leadership that includes cabinet and principals because that really is the crux of the work that's done in our district, but that's just my opinion. If there's no other discussion, Ms. O'Neill.
I'd just like to second Mr. Bernstein's thoughts about the board's need to be involved in hiring the cabinet principals. Also, I'd like to go back to a recommendation made by Dr. Francis originally that possibly the board could be involved at the level of at least describing some of the criteria that we would want to see in the person who, in the position that's up for, for being filled. So, even if that was a compromise to at least have that part as part of the process, at least we'd have some say in what it is that we're looking for in the various positions.
Ms. Stowe.
I think we talked about this at the last meeting and I was pretty clear on how I felt about it and obviously, that's why I seconded the motion. I think we hire a superintendent and they in turn hire their people. So, with that, that's obviously my opinion. I move forward with this.
Any other discussion, Ms. Dayton?
The only way to hold the superintendent accountable is to let the superintendent hire. If you get involved in that, you are making it impossible to have a valid, a valuation of your top leader and therefore, the superintendent must hire the leadership of the district.
I guess just to respond to that, I'm not looking for the board to do the hiring, but I think there's a role for the board to play in the process, whether that's developing the specifications or meeting with the finalists, but I do believe there's a role. Anyway, if there's no further discussion, the motion on the table is to accept 4112. All those in favor? All those against? That passes by a vote of six to two. Thank you. The next item is budget transfers. Ms. O'Donnell.
He'll chat your ear off. Don't hang out with him.
No. He said the same thing about you.
Yeah.
Okay. So, we have one transfer that we're seeking your approval of. Are there any questions that I can answer?
So, thank you for the response to the question. I have a real problem. We are really starting to go into other areas of the budget to cover, to cover special ed. It's increasing our special ed number, which means our special ed number for next year technically should increase in forever and ever and ever. I know, you know, we're still looking for ways to fund some of the overages in that district. I am just reluctant to keep playing this, you know, find the money elsewhere. I really think we need to look within this bed budget first before we start tackling every, every other area.
Mr. Chair.
I don't know that, I agree on what Peter's saying. I don't know, I get there the same way, but I just got to tell you, we can't run a budget with a program this large with this amount of money and keep having these overages and then like go on an Easter egg hunt for the money. There's just no way to run a budget. Okay? We either need to make this thing have the right number at the beginning or, you know, we have to manage the program, I'm going to say it this way, properly. Okay? Because, you know, this idea, I was thinking about this the other day. We were in this building, sitting in the cafeteria and Jill Gil Day just said with absolutely no concern whatsoever, "Hey, this is normal when you overrun your budget by a million dollars in spend." And you know what? We never really got, I gave up on that one because the explanation was not credible. I mean, there's no doubt we have to spend this money, but we have got to get a grip on this thing and I'll tell you, I'm going to poke my colleagues on this. Okay? We've been living with this even before the last two of you showed up. Okay? We are way overdue with doing a program review, but we've decided we don't want to do a program review. But then we look at this stuff and this is where this stuff comes home. What?
I don't think we discussed money for it.
Well, and Dr. Francis was very clear that she thought we didn't even, we didn't even agree to do it. Anyway, my point is, I agree with where Peter is, we cannot keep doing this, this is no way to run a budget. We have to either figure out a different way to budget this thing at the beginning or we got to figure out a better way to manage this as this goes on, but this cannot keep going on. I mean, I'm going to vote for this, obviously, because it meets some need for a kid, particularly one of the kids is obviously needing more services than other kids, but I guess I'm just, I'm getting sick and tired of it, I'm really getting sick and tired of it. We need to do something about this and Ralph, maybe in the few remaining months that you're in it, you could help figure this out, but, or Tony has got to come in here and figure out how to get this thing under control.
One thing here that I would say to you is that the laws in Connecticut in terms of burden of proof are hamstringing us to the point where it's not just rentage, it's all the districts, especially in southern Fairfield County, and we're doing a better job, as I pointed out in our budget presentation, of holding onto our kids and providing services to them than other districts are. I think if the laws don't change in the state legislature, we're just going to keep seeing this.
I have a comment on that.
Ms. Dayton.
To your point, I raised that at a legislative breakfast, not a single legislator in Fairfield County, not a single one who showed up for that event was willing to take on burden of proof.
All right, Ms. Holson.
Right, and I'm not sure where we'd get the money right now to do a program review, but I sort of continually felt like I was almost defending sped, saying that there is a lot of legal unforeseen costs. That being said, this is, it's to the point now where we're way over budget than we should be, so I have to agree with Peter and Peter in terms of, just in terms of it needs to be better managed, so that's my comment to Ms. Ford.
All right, if there's no other discussions, anyone want to make a motion to accept the transfer? Ms. O'Neil, second. Mr. Sher, all those in favor? All those opposed? Abstaining, seven zero one. Okay, passes. Next up is the financial and staffing report, Ms. O'Donnell.
Sorry, we submitted the report for month ending January twenty-fifth for your review, our areas of concern, what we just talked about, special education. Are there any questions that I can answer?
Ms. Dayton.
Not directly related, but I feel that since it is tangentially related, what will we receive, if anything, in advance of our Bloom-Shapiro meeting because it relates to really understanding the capital projects process and the projects we have opened? So I know it's on board docs, but when I went in, I didn't see any document.
The executive summary will be circulated tomorrow.
All right, anything else on the financial and staffing? I want to thank you for the information on the Teachers College project, that was actually very detailed and very helpful, so thank you, Irene, to your coordinator, which I thought was really, really helpful. I guess one thing I did want to ask is, yeah, Lori Elliott, did we actually cut that next year's budget as part of our slashing of the PD?
Yes, we have a plan to support the work in-house.
Fantastic, because it seems like very good work and I'm glad it's broad across the district at this point.
That's great, that's great.
Ms. O'Neil.
I have a question about the Medicaid money and are we getting that money, is that going to the BET and how does that money come to us, do they come to us quarterly or annually or what?
So the payments come in quarterly, they're being deposited into a revenue account. As you know, I've mentioned in the past that we're trying to gain access to those funds. We met with the, I think it's the BET Law Committee not too long ago because we included some modifications to the language in the budget resolution for twenty, so they wanted to, you know, discuss that further and the outcome of that discussion was that, you know, the same conversations that, you know, we're kind of used to hearing that the revenue would revert to the town, to the extent that we would need the, however, to the extent that we would utilize the expenses to support the program, we would be able to keep those expenses. So the outcome then was for, I guess, Town Legal to draft a revised resolution statement that would better meet that, you know, expectation.
But isn't that money, excess money?
It's not a part of the excess cost.
No, it's not part of the excess fund, but it's money we didn't normally get because we didn't have to apply for it, we didn't apply for it, so now that would be additional money coming from the state.
Correct, it's additional. From the federal government, yeah.
Mr. Sher, then Ms. Dayton.
Yeah, you know, that's where I was going, I'm trying to understand, push or no?
No push?
No push. Wow, leaving that alone. The, the, the mon, can you describe again what this money is? Because I, see, it doesn't matter to me if they keep the revenue as long as they fully fund our budget, right? I don't, this is this game we go through of like, if they fully fund our budget, but if this is extra special money that they weren't counting on, what is their argument for keeping it?
I can do part A, Lori can do part B.
But is it truly extra money that was never conceived of anywhere when we submitted our budget?
Correct.
Okay, okay, so that's question one. Question two is, what is their argument that they should keep it? Lori, you went to the BET, what was their argument? What did they tell you?
That, that they collect all revenues, I'm not sure.
Yeah, no, no, that's true. Well, revenues are divided into two things, right? Planned revenue, which is fully accounted for, which we should not worry about planned revenue that they keep because they wind up giving it back to us when they fully fund our budget, okay? And that's actually good news, because guess what, we don't have the risk anymore if they don't get the revenue, right? This is why everybody goes in this whole thing of like, it's like, no, no, from a risk management perspective, the town owns the risk if the state of Connecticut shorts them. Our budget doesn't get caught when that happens, so that's the good part about that.
Right.
But this is something totally different from your description. So my question is, what's their argument for keeping that and who told you, who specifically by name on the BET said, no, we think we should be keeping that its revenue? You went to the meeting, right?
We're going to name names.
Yes, name names. This is a, this is a public meeting, that was a public meeting, it's all a public meeting.
This was a discussion with, and I know Leslie Moriarty was there, Beth Crummick, do I have it right?
Yes.
Is it Karen?
Leslie Tarkington.
Karen?
Karen Fassoliottis?
I believe so.
Okay.
Abby Wadler, Town Legal.
Yeah, she's the lawyer.
Yep, myself, Mary.
But there would be four members on the, but you're saying the Law Committee Chair, you had this conversation with the Law Committee, yes?
Yes, the BET Law.
In a, must have been in a meeting of the Law Committee.
Yes.
Right?
I believe so, yeah.
And there would have been four members there, okay, fine, and supported by legal counsel, which would have been Abby Wadler from the Town Attorney's Office.
Mm-hmm.
And you're convinced they understand that this is new, extra revenue, that was made clear to them?
Yes, this has been a conversation for probably the past year. They, obviously they understand that there are additional costs that we're incurring and so that's the portion that obviously if we can support those costs, that revenue would come back to us.
I'm sorry, say that last part again.
So the additional costs that we're incurring.
What additional costs have we incurred?
We have the compu claim.
To request the money, we put it in our budget to request the money.
We have somebody who's overseeing the program, the administration of it, we may have other costs related, we have the ability to collect more revenues, so if we need to bring on somebody else to help, you know, further support that effort, so we will have costs directly related to the program.
And they're funding those?
Yes, so those would be funded and that's the language they want to modify, so instead of just saying that the monies would be added to the appropriate account in our budget, they're saying, I guess, the parts of the end, the ones that we can substantiate.
They can keep the revenue, I don't understand what the problem is. But if they're funding the costs, it's like getting the revenue back from them.
Yes, but the difference they would take, so if we, so right, so like, let's say we.
How much is the difference?
I don't know, let me just throw out numbers, right? So if we collect sixty thousand and we can support forty thousand, they'll keep the other twenty.
Yeah, okay, that's my question, is what's that delta, can you figure out what that delta is and let us know?
This is the first year we're doing the billing, so we're still trying to get everybody on.
We still don't have all the eligible kids registered yet, so we don't know what the actual predictable monthly billing will be. This is our first year doing it. We anticipate somewhere around sixty thousand, we think, sixty to eighty.
So far, we haven't collected.
We think we'll collect about eighty, but we're working with the schools to try and make sure that we get every eligible kid registered so that we can bill for those services.
My last point on this thing is, look, we have, and the board have assigned BET liaisons, right, we can go have this conversation with individual BET members, which is probably in addition to Ralph talking to who he talks to and Peter talking to Overlander and blah, 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 right, there's a bunch of people who can support to push this forward, but we need more detailed information, it can't be in the vague and the abstract. So if you want to get that information back, I know we've got four liaisons, for some crazy reason, we've got four liaisons, I don't know why, but I'm sure the liaisons can help with their individual caucuses run through this issue, but we would need, I would need, maybe the others don't, more specific and detailed information, so it isn't a theoretical conversation, it's a practical and real conversation, but I appreciate Ms. O'Neil re-raising it as an issue because that should get run to ground.
Ms. Dayton.
Mr. Sher, you are a liaison to the BET, so if you would like to pursue it, that's great. On my part, I know that the intent of the legislators was for the Medicaid reimbursement specifically to go directly to the school districts. I will follow up and do some research to see if I'm correct and whether the bill was passed the way I believe it was. Okay, so in that case, we need to follow the intent of the legislation.
Okay, good luck with that. Okay, somebody want to make a motion and put this on the table?
I think lawyerly argument between lawyers is probably not a good idea.
So Dr. Francis, you moved with the financial and staffing report forward, is there a second? Ms. Dayton, any other discussion? Ms. O'Neil.
Just wanted to ask about the user support analyst, Bob and I have had a few emails back and forth, but I still don't get my head around this. And there's a thing on the BET HR agenda, say, awaiting request to fill, so this was a position that was changed, it was a vacancy and then it was changed, it's now in a new bartending unit.
This is a position in the IT department that was located at the high school. We had a user support analyst at Habermeyer, one at the high school. When the position became vacant at Habermeyer, they repurposed the position to make sure that it reflected the current duties of the position and the title was reflective of it. When the position became open at the high school, they did the same thing, they presented to the town HR the changes that they wanted in the job description, town HR reviewed those and approved those, town HR took it to the unions, the unions had delayed the discussion for a period of time, so they finally approved the title change and the change in the responsibilities and duties. It hasn't shifted unions, still in GMEA and basically at the same level, so there was no real change in the compensation or FTEs, it's just a change in the responsibilities and duties expected of that position. It used to be a position where you changed light bulbs and overhead projectors and, you know, did that kind of work that doesn't exist anymore, so they shifted the job description to reflect the current reality of that particular role.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, Dr. Francis, you want to make the motion to?
Do we have anything on agenda?
We will, no, no, this motion, to accept the financial and staffing report. All right, is there a second?
Yeah, we did that.
I already did that.
Mr. Dayton.
Ms. O'Neil, it doesn't matter, okay, all those in favor of accepting the financial and staffing report? Passes eight zero, thank you. All right, on agenda planning, we are going to do the Cable Lighthouse session on March fourteenth. What I will do is schedule Nick for two hours, we'll start at six and then we'll add a strategic plan discussion afterwards, that way we would not be limited to an hour, because I have a feeling some of us can't hold it to an hour.
This is on the fourteenth.
This will be on the fourteenth.
Thank you.
It's one meeting?
Two.
Two items, two discussion items, no, no action. Mr. Sher.
Just so we're clear, the strategic plan conversation is contained to strategic measurement and its connection to assessment, yes?
That is what we're all looking for.
Because if we only got an hour, I hope it wouldn't bleed into a whole bunch of other stuff.
And I don't think we want a written document other than you want them to pull up the old dashboards, so maybe we can see them over time.
No, sorry, I'm a little tired, can you say that one more time, what the plan is?
We, I'm thinking, we need to talk, you've talked about this a gazillion times, you're a hundred percent correct, right? There's strategic measurements that the board deals with and then there's next level down, getting information that's operational data used by the administrators, not by the board, that is supposed to feed those tiles. I think to have a conversation about just the strategic tiles without talking about the stuff that feeds it is kind of a half conversation. So I'm saying, do those things, but let's not let the conversation drift into changing the goals right now, that's another conversation, redoing strategies, that's another conversation. I was hoping we could just have a focused conversation. And the one that really started it was Jennifer Dayton, when she brought it up in the last lighthouse, she said, you know, we really need to have a conversation about data and tiles and measurement and a hundred percent right. So let's just have a session on that, level set everybody, and then the strategy group with, presuming that gets put in place, can go off and do their thing.
And it's all, all the tiles, not, I think it won't be.
Yeah, yeah, all fifteen. I would want to do all fifteen.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
Does everybody want to do all fifteen?
Yeah, all fifteen, yeah.
Anybody else on agenda planning?
Date, oh, excuse me, work, how do you want to get a report out on all the questions from the food services pilot?
Well, do you want to, why don't we put, we don't need to put it on the calendar just yet, I mean, you can do something in writing maybe to the board and post it as an addendum to the meeting tonight and then we can figure out if there's some more discussion we need and we can schedule that meeting in the future. All right, anything else? All right, with that, Dr. Francis.
I move to adjourning.
Is there a second? Ms. Dayton, all those in favor of adjourning? Eight zero, thank you very much, we are adjourned.